Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and start off with this informational session. Again, this is informational session for people who have questions about the workforce housing ordinance that we're, the planning board has looked at and studied pretty hard. We tried to get information out there, a flyer went out to everybody explaining it. We have, we've already had another informational session a couple of weeks ago, and then we had two or three other meetings concerning workforce housing with the planning board, as well as many meetings going back several years over housing as well. So it's, it's, it's a subject that is, this board has looked at over time, including in our master plan, and trying to look at this very carefully, and also trying to keep up with what the state is, is requiring, mandating, or even coming close to saying, "You shall do this," type of thing. And this new stuff that's on the agenda, this, house builds are on the agenda this year for things to be considered. So we thought it'd be a good idea to bring this forward and try to do the right thing with what, what the state's doing, and also what's right for the town of Newington. So with that being the case, I'm just gonna open it up for anyone who has any questions, if you, you know, about what this is, and what you would like, you know, what your impressions are and so forth. And if you would, just state your name for the record, because Jane would like to have that. If we don't, if I don't do that, she'll, she'll call it out and, and you'll have to answer, so.
You'll have to answer to me.
At the end of the game. And she's, she's the one that takes care of the board, so anyways, let's go ahead.
My name is Russell McCannon. I'm a rural landing.
Ross, how did you spell your last name?
M-C-A-N-N. And I'd just like a definition of what workforce housing is.
All right, that's a very good thing. We actually, John, do you have the, the actual definition now?
Thank you.
This afternoon?
Do you have that or no? I can go look it up.
Okay. Okay, workforce housing is defined as housing that costs less than thirty percent of a household income in, as per month, am I correct? Or thirty percent of a whole?
It's either per month or annually, depending on whether or not it's rent or owned by the median household income in the Rochester Portsmouth labor market area.
And then in 2020, the maximum rent for a one-bedroom apartment is $1,029, and for a two-bedroom is $1,504, and that's for the Portsmouth Rochester labor market. That's what the state puts out. It puts it out.
Annually.
Annually. And this information, I believe, is on the web page, the town webpage, if you look it up, and under, called explanation, under the ordinances.
So definitionally, does that include section nine housing?
No. Section nine is...
Section eight.
It'd be section eight. Section eight, you mean, section eight.
It would be workforce, section eight would be workforce housing, but that's not what this is. This is, this is housing for people that...
I understand. I just say, to me, it looks like there's a wrapper being put around something that isn't necessarily being what's right. But that's why I want definitionally to see what that is, and see what the incomes are, because the income disparity between Rochester and Portsmouth is substantial.
That's the labor market area you're in. There's nothing you can do about it.
I've got a copy here for it. This is, do you wanna see it?
Yes.
Again, this is on the webpage. The town webpage is under, look under the e-news, under proposed ordinances for this year. Go into there, there's five items, and you pull down the menu, there's five items there, and it says explanation of workforce housing. It has that in it, it has other information there, explaining all, including what was put out there in the, in the mail-in to everybody that went around town. Did that answer your question, Russ?
Yeah, it does. I, I, I need a lot more background information on it to really drill into it.
Did you get the flyer?
Yeah, I did get the flyer.
Was that helpful?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Ken Ernstoff, Rochester Farm Lane. I took a look at the, at the map of where the three lots are, and let me tell you what I read off of it, and maybe you can correct me. One seems to be where the Gulf Station is, one seems to be, I think, Fisher Scientific, and then the third one would be for, on the other side of the Gulf Station down where the state has staged their trucks and other equipment for paving.
You almost have it right. The one that's behind the Gulf Station is a, what is called Portsmouth Sign. It's like...
Oh, okay.
It's a large wooden building, wooden structure.
It's like a little wall there.
Well, it's a Portsmouth Sign. I guess they might have a tenet as well, so.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Go ahead.
So Craig Decker, sixty-two number... So in other words, the, the state's definition of workforce housing doesn't include section eight. In other words, in other words, the, whatever structures that get built will not be section eight housing, is that what? I'm, I'm just trying to work up what, what he was saying.
My understanding of section eight is that it's a completely different program for what basically government subsidized housing. This is not government subsidized housing.
Okay, it's low, low income though.
Yes.
I don't think low income, I'd say...
It includes low, I, I did read the definition. It did say it includes low income.
If someone doesn't have, I'm not sure how the state does section eight, and how they charge for it, or if it's just basically a welfare-type housing.
Correct.
Workforce housing is not supposed to be that. It's not the intent of it. The intent of it, basically, is defined as people have jobs...
Right.
...that don't pay as much, but yet we need people to work in this area, and that's the biggest problem right now, is people finding housing. All I know is right, right now, we are not in, what's the word it's, I'm looking for? Not in compliance of, of this. And I'm afraid that with all the housing pushes being, and I think the board's afraid of, of all housing pushes being pushed down from the governor all the way down to the House and the Senate, and all the builders are coming forward in extreme difficulty with, with getting housing in the area, that I think we need to do something. The board thinks we need to do something.
Another thing was the, was the, I noticed that the scope of, of the workforce housing starts at nice homes, affordable homes. You know, I think it was five hundred thousand, around there, and it went all the way down to, you know, apartments, affordable apartments. So and you could, there would be single homes, it could be condo-type structure. So I guess there's, there's a lot there. So, I mean, we, we don't have any control over what would go in there once we change the zones.
The, the problem with Newington is that, and it's, 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 it's a, Newington's a unique town, in the sense that all of your residential areas are on, there's no sewer.
Correct.
So you do allow accessory dwelling units. But I, and we, we think that there's somewhere in the twenty-five, about twenty-five in town, not all of which are permitted, but that, we think that's about what they are. Those constitute, those can constitute workforce housing, or go towards that. But the reality with Newington is that your housing stock is pretty expensive, it's rather high-end, the, the likelihood of you solving your workforce housing problem by everybody creating ADUs is, is la, it's not gonna happen.
I know.
So, and then, so the next, the next part of the problem, or the next way that we, the way we tackled it was look, to look at where we thought these things were, made sense.
Yeah, there's sewers down there.
There's sewers down there, there, it's not bifurcated by the Spaulding Turnpike, right? Because our thought was if we put housing across the, the Spaulding, they're gonna be so separated from the rest of the town, they're not gonna feel a part of it. And we felt, although not everybody in the, from the, from the public agrees, we felt that the connection to town, so that if, if there were kids, they could ride their bikes or walk to school, or, or whatever. We thought it was important to have, be on this side of the Spaulding. For that reason, it really has to be multifamily. You're not gonna put single-family homes, 'cause we, you wouldn't get the density to make them affordable enough. So it has to be multifamily.
That was nothing, that was nothing too, is, is the, have you explored the density? Have you done these studies to see if, what is going to be viable, about whatever the viable structures are gonna be? I mean, are you looking at the, making twenty units? Are you looking at making fifty units? How, how I'm looking at, what I just discussed before with the population of the town, I mean, would there's a possibility of a big balloon happening here? It's gonna really change everything?
All right, so...
So minimalist, is what I, that's what I'm hoping for.
What the law requires is that the town make available, reasonably available, and zone reasonably available, to allow for high-density workforce housing. All right, and there's two parts, there's two parts of workforce housing. One can be single-family units, like ADUs, accessory dwelling units, which we are compliant in, we're not compliant in the multifamily. And multifamily means five units or more. All right, what we have, what we have written up is something that if the landowner wishes to develop the land, again, it's up to the landowner to, to move forward with it, all we have to do is make it available for an applicant to come in and see if, and apply to do it. And it's based on the standards that we set, and it's all explained in the ordinance that has been written up, and several pages long. It's on the webpage. Do we have a copy of it here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a copy, if anyone wants a copy, but it's all electronically on the web, every bit of it.
Can I just follow?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, but the other thing that, and this is, I mean, I, years, twenty-some odd years ago, I worked for the Rockingham Planning Commission, and, and the, the planning commissions in New Hampshire are, are required to perform a housing needs assessment for the entire state. Rockingham County or Rockingham Planning Commission would, would do it for you. The, the problem is, in what, in a perfect world, what they would do is say, "Newington, New Hampshire needs to provide one hundred and forty-two units," or "Portsmouth has to require twenty-seven hundred and ninety units." They don't do that, and they can't do that. But, so I, I see what you're saying, is that we, we wanna provide what's fair and what's reasonable, what our, what our quota should be, but what that number is, is anyone's guess.
Has any study been done?
There's, there's, the, the Rockingham Planning Commission does a housing needs assessment, I think, on, every several, every few years, but they don't put a number in the study. They don't say, New, they, what they do is they say, "For the region, we should have X number of units of, of workforce housing," but they don't ascribe it to every town.
So could we change the zoning and then limit what kind of structures, one in there?
No, we're not changing what kind of structures going there. We are making it available as an overlay.
No, I know, but it, it, what I'm saying is it will be available to a developer to build these units you're talking about.
If, if they, if they choose, if they choose to step forward to the town to try to put housing in these particular lots, yes, they would be, have to go by what we have set aside and how they were to be built.
Oh, so we can govern the amount?
We can govern it based on the density?
The density.
Density.
Yeah.
Density meaning?
Density, and forty percent of the land has to be green space?
Green space. How many units you could get on the lot? But we can also fine-tune this, and I know that Dennis, you know, this was, we, you know, it's our hope that, I mean, a fair amount of time and work went into this ordinance. It's an ordinance that was, like most, it was, was used, it was used successfully in another town. But I know the board has already talked about fine-tuning it. In other words, maybe limiting how many stories it can be, how many units per building, so that, you know, if, if something like this is built, it's not what?
Stores?
Stores. How tall they can be.
Okay.
So, you know, you don't get a three-story, forty-unit building, maybe it's, it's six-unit buildings, or something like that. So, you know, that's something we can do in the future if this ordinance passes, and if it doesn't pass, we could retool it and bring it back to the town next year with those changes.
So, and I guess another question to follow up with this is that, you have the three such lots of land, have you done a study to see what, how many units could go in there? And I mean, just, I'm, what I'm looking at is a number. I mean, if, 'cause I know the last meeting that we, we were at, even though we don't want something to happen, we may not want something to happen, the state can override that? I guess they have a...
It's not the state. We'd get a developer coming into the town that says, "I have a lot of, if we have, I'm not compliant." A developer come into town and say, "You're not compliant with workforce housing. We see that lot over there, and we like that lot over there, and we wanna go build houses on there." They can build to the height, they can build the number, they can build to the density that they wish, because we are not compliant.
Right.
And, and this year, starting June first, the state passed a law that is gonna set up unhousing, if the board denies something, there is, it doesn't go to the ZDA, it goes directly to this board, it's a three-member board, mostly made up by attorneys, and appointed by this governor, Sununu, in this case, to look over housing and see if the town, if the town is reasonable. If the town has no ordinance, then it's basically carte blanche, do what they want.
Right, right. No, what I'm saying is if those three lots, and they're pretty good-sized lots, and have you done a study to see, like, like I said, that, you know, and the developer is gonna wanna do what's gonna be most valuable to him.
We have not. And, and, and we have not, because, you know, it, the, all three of those are private properties.
Right.
The, the drive-in theater, there's a fair amount of wetland. I, I don't, no, we have not. And it would take, that, you know, we could do that, it would be, it would take a fair amount of time and effort and cost.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, just...
Chris, can I, I'm gonna try, can I ask one more thing to Craig?
I can give an example. The, these are my own numbers, having walked this property decades ago, with the chairman, Nestle, at one time, who used to own the drive-in theater. The, forget the lot number, which is the one, this is state of New Hampshire, is a fifteen-acre lot, I think. Weapons comprise approximately three acres of that. There are utility easements and setbacks that'll comprise another two acres. We will require, as far as a housing development, certain walk-around area, park, outdoor activity close by for kids, that will probably take up one to two walk, walk areas, walkways, one to two acres. It'll take a couple of acres of marking, various spots in between, and connector roads in between. That leaves maybe four to five acres to put buildings on. And if you put, you know, two to three buildings on, about twenty-four units each, of eight per floor, you're gonna end up with, with three buildings, but that'll just about cover those two acres. So that's about what you're gonna get on that, on the largest lot there. And from then, if I can ask, answer another question, the workforce housing ordinance states a maximum price as, depending on the average household income of the, in this particular area, which was quoted, that's about $1,500 per month. The minimum price is set by the developer, he can go as low as he wants, but he has to make a profit. He has, obviously, the land costs, he has taxes to pay every year on that, he has the building costs, he's gotta get profit in there, he has to get materials to build, labor, and he has to have a profit for all the subcontractors in there. So it's not going to be cheap to put up a three-story building of suitable quality that people will want to do there. He's gonna want to attract people, he's gonna wanna attract people that can afford to pay the run rent month after month. So I doubt if you'll see, if the maximum price is $1,500 and he can make money at that, he's not gonna go all the way down to seven or eight hundred dollars, or when he could charge more, because he has that much profit to make on taxes and other things to pay each and every year, maintenance, staff, other things. So I think you're gonna, you're not gonna see it drop into, down to a lower area. Section eight housing requires a community to adopt. Section eight housing, Newington does not, so that is not a supplement that is available to lower the cost. So I think what you're gonna see is you're gonna be, see people paying pretty close to $1,500 per month on over seventy-five percent of the units as minimum, and that's gonna, that takes a fairly good income to, to pay them. And the, on the low end, it's the operator or owner of the project's gonna make sure that it can be a money-making business, and they're not gonna drop much lower simply in order to, to provide cheap housing. So that's, that's I see it. Did I hear you correctly, on roughly twenty-four per building, twenty-four units? That's, that's a, that was a guess.
Chris is, yeah, Chris is just using that, his own, I don't think it's that, I don't think it's that high, but that's all right.
If you took it, if you took, you know, problem all two families, the two, two-bedroom units, and go in a center and three, four on each side, you have three floors, that's twenty-four, okay? Then, and, and that's with the largest unit on that, our largest lot. The one that was mentioned, that was, of course, the sign, is an established building that was actually, the footprint of that used to be a, a proposed hotel. But businesses are well-established in the bottom, perhaps upstairs could be a number of units, but you're talking simply a handful, maybe even one handful up there. The other area is an established business, business, however, again, it's a fairly large lot, could be subdivided four specifically on it, but that's half the size of what they just went over, so you're talking maybe one to two buildings. So it is viable, it's in the area, and one of the reasons this board picked it is, it's not going to grow into something that these workforce housings are gonna double the population overnight.
So I saw two hands. This one came up first, and then we'll get to you, Laura, we'll get to you in a second. I have one paper.
Okay, so I'm Sharon Brown, and I live on Little Bay Road. I have a question and a statement, I guess. My statement is, it seems that since the state is requiring us to do this, that the planning board has done their homework, and they're putting forth this, because we have to do something, and so you folks have decided this is probably the best way to do it. Is that correct?
It's correct.
And this is our opportunity to ask questions, but you guys have done, have put a whole lot of effort into it. Okay, so that's the first thing. The second thing is, for those of us who don't, maybe don't know every single person up here, but would it be okay if you all tell us who you are and what your titles are? Are you, this, the planning board isn't all of you, is it?
With the exception of the planner, that's John Krebs, and our recorder, Jane Kendall. Everyone else up here is either on the, either a member of the board or an alternate to the board.
Okay.
No, you're on the planning board. You're a member of the planning board. He's a selectman also.
Okay.
So if that, now, if you have a question, so you want us to introduce?
Yeah, I would love for you to introduce yourself.
Okay, so this is John Krebs, he's a planner.
Krebs?
Okay, Krebs.
Okay.
And he has a plethora of information, I mean, of, of knowledge, and he's been, he's worked in many different towns, and, and John, if you wanna say something about yourself?
You've done a great job.
All right, so I'm, I'm the chairman for the planning board, been doing this for a while, and really enjoy it. I love my town, and I'm doing, I think, as the rest of the board's working really hard to protect this town and keep it being a place that we like to live in.
I started as an alternate on the planning board. My name's Erica Manz, and I was elected to my position last year.
I'm Ben Johnson, and I've been on the planning board a year now too, as well.
Mike Marconi, I'm a selectman, representing the planning board. I forget how many years of any of them is.
A while, yeah. A while. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Russell Cook, I'm at forty-one Hane Lane, and this is my first year on the planning board, and actually, I'm gonna run for another seat next time, so you'll get an opportunity to see my name on the ballot.
I am Jim Weiner. I've been on the planning board for five years. This year, I'm an alternate. I'll be running for a full-time member. Been in town for eleven years, my wife was born here, Jennifer Ken.
And I'm Christopher Cross, I've been on the planning board about twenty years, I live across from the library, at the end of New Will Hill Road, and also on the Rockingham Planning Commission, twenty-five years.
And there is one missing member tonight, Peter Welch, he's not here tonight, couldn't be here, and Rick Sterns, he's an alternate, he could not be here either. Okay, Laura?
Yeah, Laura Coleman, two-twelve, possibly. I'm, I guess I'm a little confused about the criteria used to select the lots. I was thinking you, that the town had to provide lots, but these are, did you ask these people that if they, if they mind? I mean, they, they, so they had no option as to whether their, their lots were...
But Laura, remember, this is, we didn't change the zoning underneath, so they can do whatever they want today, they can do whatever they want tomorrow. We basically added another layer. So if we were changing the zoning, like stripping something away from them, say they couldn't do offices, or they couldn't do, you know, any kind of commercial, that, I think, would definitely require notification. This is saying, you can do everything you want to today, tomorrow, in the future, and if you want, you can do housing.
Yeah, so if they decide to move somewhere else, they can sell it to someone.
And it, and it's, it's something else they could add to what, you know, that, that someone could buy it for another use that wasn't allowed, if this doesn't, if this ordinance doesn't pass.
Okay.
Yep.
What about the lot where, the, right on Shattuck Way, as soon as you turn on Shattuck Way, the, it used to be a lay-down area? Is that owned by the state?
No, that's owned by Mark Phillips. It was owned by Eversource at one time, so he bought that from Eversource when they sold off the power plants. They, they sold off that land. Okay, but the intent was, is that it's on the other side of the highway, we're trying to keep all the residential areas attached to the residential area.
Yeah.
Now, the big thing about having it in the residential area, there's no, you can't do high-density, the soils are bad, not very good to support it, but on the other part of it, is that we have sewer available, just a short ways down the road, which is the areas that we identified. So they can...
I kinda wonder, it seems like a...
And, and right in the RSA's, it talks about...
I see why you...
Right in the RSA, it talks about if sewer, like you can't deny them connection to sewer if you have it available, you can't, you can't put obstacles in a way, in fact, they expect us to bend over backwards in a way to, to accommodate. So you can't put things that block them from coming in, but you can also, but you can sit there and say, "Here's an area that you can do workforce housing." So that's what this board is doing, we're trying to become compliant with that particular mandate.
Yeah.
And if we don't, like, we said here, and in the write-up, someone could come in and say, "This is where we want to put it, and you're not compliant," and for all I know, they could say, "We're gonna choose the waterfront industrial area, down the waterfront, and we're gonna, and we're gonna put housing down there." Now, is that a good thing to do that? It's not. But would somebody wanna do that? There's been inquiries about putting housing in the waterfront industrial, because it's so desirable to have houses down.
So that's only if there's no lots available, the overlay is not in existence, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if we don't have something avail, if we don't have something that's available, they can't go down to the water, say, "We wanna put in a waterfront industrial, we have a place for it."
As we talked, I, I think you were there just a year or so ago, when we were talking with the Rockingham Planning Commission about this sort of housing, and they were talking at the time about combining it with a revitalization of the mall area, to combine the two, so you would have the housing in and around. And it was in terms of retired people who don't have the means, since there really isn't a very good transportation system in this area, to get to the stores that they need to. Has any, has the Rockingham Planning Commission...
Let me try to answer the transp, let me answer the transportation issue.
Yeah.
Starting, starting June first, this town, this town is working with Coast Bus. Starting June first, they're making available a coast, a coast bus route that's gonna run all the way to Town Hall. Again, the Town Hall's gonna be by call first.
Yeah.
But they're gonna also be connecting up and down Shattuck Way, and over to this area, coming up around to the Spaulding Turnpike, where this, where this overlay district is being shown, so there is gonna be a connect to public transportation.
That'd be great. They used to do that, and then they stopped doing it. Has the Rockingham Planning Commission talked anymore about that sort of thing down near the mall?
No, I think, I think what you're seeing is, I don't remember the Rockingham Planning Commission, Christie, you remember?
It was, while we were talking about the master plan, they were here, and someone else was here, I forget who the other one was. There were two representatives who were throwing ideas out there, but at the same time asking townspeople what they thought.
I don't think we discussed that.
This was just one of the subjects that came up.
That was September, I wasn't at that meeting, but I think you had regional representatives from the House Housing Committee?
We had several meetings, there were, what, maybe four or five meetings?
We've been working on the master plan for the last three years, so...
Laura, are you talking about, excuse me, Charles?
Well, actually, it was just for the public.
Are you talking about the visioning sessions that we had?
Yeah, that's what it was.
About two years ago.
Yeah.
We have those and have that information. Those were all residents that provided information there, and we had captured and recorded them, and used that to develop the housing section of the master plan, as well as the other items and ordinance that contained housing.
Yeah, but it was the planning commission, and who was the other? There was some other group there that they talked about, these were things that were being done in other areas.
It was a meeting facilitated by the Rockingham Planning Commission, who were simply running themselves and taking notes, and they wrote up the particulars, assessment of the town[1714.66] It was a meeting facilitated by the, the Rockingham Planning Commission, who were, um, simply, um, running the show and taking notes, and they wrote up the particulars, uh, assessment of the town inputs at those three sessions, as well as the questionnaire that ten percent of the, of the town filled out.
Yeah, what happens with, there's like a charrette, I think is what you would call, is that correct, Chris? As, the charrettes, those call about people coming in, talking with them, and the pies is, it's like pie in the sky, let's talk about everything and bring it all in, what do we wanna do? And then get, do surveys, and then figure out what the town is best in, and, and I think the town was pretty good about housing and what, and what they said about trying to keep things basically residentially, that what it is, residential area. Um, but the state is coming down, saying that housing is a, is a critical mass right now, as far as not having enough of a state.
Brenda Blonigan, Hannah Lane, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but my research shows that this law has been on the books for ten years. Is that correct?
Since two thousand and ten.
Yeah, so that's ten years. And for ten years, we, as the town of Newington, have been kicking that can down the road. We're, we've talked about it, in fact, I do believe the master plan that is on the website, which is not the one you're working on, I mean, you're working on now, but this is the old master plan. One of the sites that you have chosen is in that master plan, and I believe the planning board ten years ago said that that was a good plan, that, and that is the old movie theater one, down there. So if we kick this down the road anymore, the state can very likely come in and say, you're non-compliant. This developer here wants to buy this piece of land that is on Fox Point Road, or on Bean Lane, or anywhere like that. Okay, this developer says, you're non-compliant, and the state has also said that they will help developers make towns compliant. Is that not correct?
They, they won't help developers, they, they'll force, basically, what would, what would happen was a developer would come in and say, this is what it costs me to build, to buy the land, I need to extend sewer, I, I need so much density to make the math work, and then the state's gonna say, you know, this sort of, this jur, or this...
Jury.
Three-panel judge, uh, uh, three, a three-judge panel is gonna say, uh, we're gonna force the town to extend the sewer there.
And that is, the town is gonna have to extend.
That's right. So it's really, it's, the, the, the state is basically saying, either you do it, or developers, when they come in, the state isn't gonna force it on us.
Correct.
But they're gonna, if someone wants to come in and do it, the, all, all the rules go away.
Correct.
Until they get to the math that works for them to create the town.
So if we put this plan in place, it may not be the best plan in the world, but if we put this plan in place, it protects us as the residents of Newington...
That's right.
From that happening. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Jack, and then...
Okay, just, just say, oh, Brenda, right, so, uh, and if we don't do anything, and I think we need to, um, development come in and wants to put, where the transfer station is, sorry, Greg, uh, our big field behind the school, hey, that's a great piece of land, you know, and... If we had no plan and no protection effect, we could, that could be a possible suggestion.
If the developer could buy that land, but the town owns that land, and I don't think the town could be forced to using their own land to put in, um...
But your point is any parcel?
Any parcel.
It's any, it's not...
It could be any parcel, it could be any parcel.
But it could be right in the middle of a residential, the road, or, or any of those roads, not where we wanna put them, or...
It could be anywhere they wanna put it.
The parsonage house. The other concern I have, if that ever went through, the old driving that developed the school, it's getting closer to maximum capacity all the time, you know, I'm sure the state doesn't care if you're gonna build a new school, but, but is that, is that, if, when they come to you for a site plan, or would that be considered at all?
Yes. All, all impacts would be considered. Yes.
Hi, Millian Hyatt from Little Bay Road. So are you saying then that the state could come in and emit domain on somebody's land, I guess?
No.
So how could anyone, this seems almost like a lesson in futility, because you make these parcels, you, you change the zoning, and then no one's forced to do anything. So we really haven't solved the workforce housing problem.
We can't, but, but, remember, the planning board, all, we cannot, we can't solve any problem, because...
Right.
We...
You say, but they, what would you...
We, we, we create these ordinances, and then it's, you know, wait and see who comes, um, so...
But you're, like, what you said, though, that they would be, you know, forced to make available something like, you know, housing down on the industrial side by the water, but you can't, but then you said you can't make anybody do anything, so how is...
Jim, I'm gonna try...
I mean, I'm a Realtor, so one of the problems I know we're having is they can't afford to buy the land to put the properties up. You have too many dollar parcels in the middle of Portsmouth. You know, they, you know, I, I, that's a big problem, they can't afford to buy the land, so it almost seems like this is a lesson in futility. Because, as I know valuable, what our, my land would be, and I, I'm not gonna sell it for under what its real value is.
I, I agree. That's, that's part of the big problem that, that the state is having, all, especially along the seacoast, uh, as, as making this work. The thing is, if we have nothing in place, they can come in with the density that they want, including any high-rise building they wanna put in at the density they wish, anywhere.
For affordable.
A developer.
For affordable.
It could be affordable, and it could be mixed.
Yes, for affordable.
And, cause, and if you look at our ordinances, it says seventy-five, seventy-five percent affordable housing, workforce housing, and twenty-five percent, the way we've written it up, would have to be, um, regular housing, the full-rate housing. And the affordable housing has to be built to the same standard as the full-rate housing, and that's the way it's been written up. It's, and we took a lot of stuff from a lot of towns that have already done this ahead of us, but if we do nothing, they're gonna be able to put in wherever they wanna put it.
But that's my question, how? How can they just...
Well, now, what's gonna happen, and we tried explaining that already. I'll try one more time.
Have the...
I'll try one more time. A developer can come in, and if they can find land that they can get their hands on...
Right.
And it's not zoned for the housing, for housing, or any kind of housing whatsoever, it's zoned for anything, but they get their hands on the land, and we do not have a workforce housing ordinance, they can say, we're going to pursue putting housing on this land, workforce housing on this land, because you're not compliant.
I get that.
And then when they go to the...
She's trying to get to the math problem.
So I guess, but like, when people are saying, you know, the old parsonage, we, but they can't, because there has to be water and sewer there. So they wanna bring water and sewer all the way down into that section of town? You mean, they would, they have to put sewer in?
I don't know that we would be, that, that, we have to, I'm not sure about that, but, but, that's what I'm hearing, but I'm not positive that is the case.
You can't put all those people on septic tanks, as, the state's not gonna allow that.
Well, you can. I mean, it happens in other towns, but because, the, I mean, the other problem that we have in Newington is that your soils are garbage. You know, most of the residentially-zoned land i- isn't well-suited for onsite septic. It's fine for single-family homes, but if you wanted to put fifty units, it wouldn't really work well. So the likelihood of anybody building a, a workforce housing complex in the residentially-zoned areas without sewer is, is, it, it's just not, it's not a reasonable thing to suggest it happen.
You could probably put multifamily, like, you could put, you could probably put in, like, ten, fifteen units, as long as you can get the perk test for supporting that many units. That's where it would happen, but they could choose where they wanna put it, it could be right next door to any of us, if they wanted to do that, as, as long as they get the perk test to work. And there are places in town that, that the, the water percolates quite well, but most of the town is not, that's not the case. Yes, sir?
Jefferson Prey, Fabian Point. So, if the owners of these three chosen pieces of land, maybe this was just asked just a different way, but say they wanna charge five million dollars, or whatever amount they wanna charge, and it's been approved, can the state then force the town to find another area? You say the owners of the land, the, the parcels that we've, you guys chose, and the, the owners just say, ten million dollars, you know, I know, you know, if you guys really wanna build it, and they charge whatever they want, then what does the state say?
It's up to between the builder and the landowner.
Correct, so, that, well, I guess my point is that we could just keep, you know, the people owning the land just wanted to charge...
It's a, it's a goo, it's a good question you have. I mean, i- i- you know, i- i- if a savvy developer were to come along and say, you've identified three parcels, you know, we've been trying for three years to make a deal, we can't, um...
Right.
You know, the, I, I would suggest probably they would come to the board and say, you need to find another parcel, or more land, to make this viable, or we're gonna do, you know, maybe we're gonna do something, take legal action, I don't... And it's a, it's a question that we haven't really, you know, flown up the flagpole, but it's...
Cause my other question is, so where are the surrounding towns, like Ry, Newcastle? And where's it gonna go in Newcastle? So I, I'm wondering, like, even Portsmouth, like, you read the Portsmouth Herald every day, it's always an article about workforce housing in Portsmouth. You know, so it's like, where are these other towns, like I said, Newcastle, Greenland? I mean, where is it going in these towns?
I don't know where it's going in those towns.
Right, yeah.
I'm looking, I'm looking at our town, and we want to comply with that law, because if we don't, they're gonna force it, so I'm, I'm gonna try to move on to other, there's a lot of hands going, Emily?
Yes, Emily Savinelli, Fabian Point. Um, Ry does actually have it in their master plan. I was able to find that on their website, um, because I, I kind of had a feeling that, you know, that, that this, that, you know, I was curious myself, like, how are these other towns doing this? Um, and they do have it in their master plan, and it is zoned, it did pass, and it's zoned, and there was a project, um, a couple of years ago, I don't know if it ever got completed, I didn't dig any further, but, um, Newcastle, I think they just said something in their master plan, like, you know, the cost of... The cost of the land isn't going to be economically viable for multifamily housing, is basically what they have writ, that I could find written, um, because at the end of the d, day, it's a math game, so, you know, how, how much land, and, no developer who wants to make money on workforce housing is gonna go put a development in Newcastle, it just doesn't make sense. Um, but I also wanted to bring up, um, to Jack's point about the school, did the planning board receive the copy of the study that the school had done, the, um, that the plan, uh, the school board had done about the capacity of the school?
We just received it about, when they had the budget hearing.
Okay, okay, cause I, I feel like that's good information. I mean, I think it's like sixty-two is the max?
Sixty-five.
Yeah, it's, and next year, they have sixty for enrollment, so...
That's the max.
That's, that's where we're at. I mean, it's definitely, that's gonna be a, that's gonna be a, an issue.
A lot of them are tuitioned.
Right now, it's seven tuition, but they would go first, so, I mean, you're still got all over forty kids, and if you bring another thirty or forty into the housing, it won't fit.
All right, so to, to help Jane here, um, she, she...
It's got up to over the fifty, I'm sorry.
To help Jane here, I've gotta try to let people introduce themselves and ask the questions, otherwise, she won't be able to keep us, keep, keep us on track, so I'm gonna try to keep that down, but thank you. I'll just answer the question real quick, Emily, since you asked. Sixty-five is the number they gave me. They're at, they're gonna be at sixty next year, that's what they expect, and a lot of them are tuitioned in. All right, so, Chris, you got a question?
No.
All right, so that's what, that's what I understand are the numbers.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, Jack, right, it's about seven kids tuitioned in this year, I can...
Okay.
So they expect.
Uh, is there anybody else before Greg? Anybody else who hasn't asked any questions? I'm trying to, I'm, so, all right, Greg?
So in other, in other words, we would have to go with a bigger school, if, if a developer did get the okay, permit to do that.
It's a possibility, but depending upon the, um, school results, and...
Yeah, I'm just saying taxes are gonna be an issue that we need to consider in this, in this whole thing, I mean, where taxes are already rising, property tax is already rising, and they're gonna continue to rise, I think if one of these structures comes in, but, um, what I was gonna ask you was, has the state yet mandated any community, forced any community to follow...
Well, let me try to follow up again, again. The state sets the law in place, it's up to the town, and then to adopt the law, and it, how it sees fit for its town, which is what we're doing right now.
Right.
The, then it goes to each individual town, and depending upon a developer going to that town and say, I want to go ahead and develop on this particular land in your town, and this is what we wanna do. The state doesn't force it until it goes to an appeal court, or to Supreme Court in this case, right, so right now, effective June first, it's gonna be going to this three-judge panel that's going to decide on each of the towns and each of the cases. They're trying to speed up the process, and that's what the whole purpose of going to this three, because I guess it could be in court for years, and the whole purpose is to try to shorten it to just months, or ninety-eight.
So this is a new process with the state, and they will be following...
Chris, I, I got that right, right? I know you've been following it closer than me, but...
Faster process.
It's a much faster process. There's no going to the ZBA, they consider the planning board, there's no going to the ZBA, it goes directly to the...
And have the head communities been involved in this yet? Have they had a...
The, the law has not been enacted, it will not be, uh, voted on and approved, it will be by June, uh, this, by any old year, and it won't take effect until next January.
No, Chris, it's effective June first of this year.
Okay.
Yeah, it's effective June first.
Something just happened.
They have another law, which are trying to repeal that law, to get rid of that three-judge panel. I guess some towns are getting together, and, but June first, and Chris, if I'm wrong, I thought it was June first of this year that it's...
There's, what you're referring to is a law that was passed last year.
Yes, that's correct, yep, yep.
There are other laws that have further outending base, some are better, some make, make things worse, from the standpoint of forcing a community to have workforce housing at places they don't think it's compatible with their other neighbors, which is our interest.
Anyone else? I see Craig, his hands up. Anyone else? All right, Craig?
Well, I was gonna say, uh, I'm also concerned about the location. I've gotten input from a lot of people about, they'd like to see it either at the PDA, or if they can maybe over on Shattuck, um, but not right at that location. In the description that we got in the mail, one of the ideas of putting it there was because kids could ride their bikes and walk down Nibble Hill to school. I'd hate to see that, it's very dangerous going down Nibble Hill. So that would be, be forced to build a, a bike path, or something like that, you know, I, I just think that's a, that's an issue, it's an important issue.
Yeah, I know there, I do know there's a bike path committee that's been select, that's been put together by the selectmen, that they're looking at bike paths throughout the town right now. I s, I don't know where they're at or what they're doing, I do know that, that's something that they are doing. And, um, as far as the location, again, we're gonna reiterate, we want them to be a pot, on this side of the Spaulding Turnpike, a budding up against the residential area now. It's not far from the downtown section, you know, the section we're sitting in right now, literally, it's not far from that, so, um, would it be that far to, to, for people to, you know, get to the school? It probably wouldn't be, but they would probably still use buses, is what the school department tells me, to pick them up.
And I think that's, that's why more recommendations...
Just to clarify, the others, the, PDA is off the table. They will not allow, they'll allow no housing, so...
But I mean, this is the recommendation of the planning board. In other words, it's a, if the town votes to have it, but they wanna have it in another part of town, you'd go along with that?
Right now, it's for this part of the town. That's what the overlay would be, would have to be a change of the ordinance.
Oh, okay, so you wouldn't change the ordinance in, on Shattuck, or anything like that?
Not, not unless, not unless it comes up to a vote for the town.
Yeah. See, I don't think, I think that, uh, real estate is gonna be such a high value, I, I just don't see a developer putting something that isn't gonna get him the most bang for his buck, you know, I just, I, to me, I think...
That's, that's a big part of, Brenda?
Brenda Blonigan, Hannah Lane, you're absolutely right, the price of the land in this town, however, and we've seen it in Portsmouth, you talk about the waterfront, the industrial area. Let's put up a high-rise apartment building on the industrial area, and, oh, by the way, not all the houses in that apartment complex, or condominium complex, whatever you wanna call it, has to be workforce housing. Most of it can be million-dollar housing, and I will tell you, people will pay million dollars, even though the only thing that they're looking at is big gas tanks and everything else. They'll pay a million dollars for a condo, just to say that they have waterfront, and, oh, by the way, the penalty apartments for the workforce housing will also, they'll be in the back of the apartment complex, back of the road, or, so it is doable. If a developer sees that, they wanna pay that money, and they wanna develop those, let's say you have five condominiums, that's five million dollars, cause you can sell them for a million dollars if it's looking at that water. So, we as the town, if we don't protect ourselves, by passing this ordinance, anything is a go for a developer, and, you know, we say, look at Portsmouth, Portsmouth has, we are the, if we build workforce housing, it's gonna be for Portsmouth. It's not gonna be for Newington, it's gonna be for Portsmouth, let's face it. Rochester's workforce housing is for the Portsmouth workforce. So if we don't do anything, we are really opening our town up for develop, uh, a developer to come in and do whatever they want, as long as they can find the property.
Oh, I got someone back here before you, Russ.
Me. Ann Hyland Peabody, um, Twenty Gun Hill Landing. I think something that's important to put on the table, it's always said about Newington, is, there's nothing to compare it to. There's no town to compare to Newington, and that's true, because we are such an anomaly. Just because we vote in an overlay, it is available. There are property owners that now have an additional use for their property, should they choose or not choose. It changes nothing, but it checks a box with the state of New Hampshire that changes a lot. The vulnerability that we have, if we are not proactive, the reactive piece will have to kick in, because the decision will be taken away from us. So by doing this, we check a box, we become compliant, it's available. Having workforce housing is a totally separate event from making it available. There are two things that right now are very far apart. This is step one, protect us, vote it in, and I think that's important. Thank you.
And where are the lots again? The lots that were chosen? I kept thinking it was down there where Blackstone's...
I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you a map, so you have it, and then I'll tell you what they are.
The, the lots essentially are between the Spaulding Turnpike and what's known as railway or Blackstone Stitch that the airports don't bring with the runway agents.
It's basically, it's basically the Dermo Fisher, it's the building right behind it, and just closer to the Spaulding Turnpike, which is Portsmouth sign, and there's also the old Drive-In Theater, what used to be the Drive-In Theater, I think you know as a...
Yeah.
All right.
So they're all on the same side?
They're on the same place, they all have, they all have gas, they all have water, they all have sewer. Sewer's the big one, it's already there, and it's all in place, and it's up to the landowners, whether or not they wanna do it.
The state owns the Newington Outdoor Theater lot, so they've got full control of it.
Right now, they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, Hyatt, Little Bay Road, is that to say it's for sale? I mean, you said right now, is it, is that, I mean...
Everything is always for sale at any point in time, and I'm, I'm so glad we said that, because Ann made a comment, and the other people have made a comment, that we've made an overlay. The overlay means, in essence, we've added value to those people's lands. That building, that's the sign company, now can be sold into a multi-complex living co, you know, living structure. So it's whatever you choose it to be and how you end up defining it, and it's, it's, we, as Ann said, and, um, I would, actually, before, it was stated by Brenda Blonigan, when Brenda got done talking, I almost wanted to say, I wanna move the motion, because it was, it covered everything except the one question you asked, which was, oh, it's great and wonderful to say that we have an overlay in these buildings... When Brenda got done talking, I almost wanted to say, "I wanna move the motion," because it was, it covered everything except the one question you asked, which was, oh, it's great and wonderful to say that we have an overlay in these buildings, in this case, two buildings and a structure owned by the DOT, or whatever the case, whatever the mix is. Each one of those is owned by a private owner. It has to become economical for a developer to see the property, let's say the sign company, and go, "Portsmouth Sign, I want that lot." They have to make a deal. But Ann made the point of, the check the box. If we aren't compliant, we make ourselves vulnerable to what they mean, the state decides. Here, we're choosing something that someone also said, "Jack, not optimal." No, it's not optimal. But it does meet the qualifications, it gives us store without a lot of money if we have to extend store. It gives us gas, you know, it gives all of the things that check the box, check the box, checks the box. Now, the owner may turn around and say, "I like your ten mil," I'm gonna double your number. Ten million dollars if you want my lot. Why? Because you can turn around and build as big as you want, and tell the state, the state can fight with it down, and you got yourself a fifty-story building. That's your problem to work on, but my price is ten million dollars.
So are any of these properties for sale now or under?
I, I, I just a question over here.
I'm sorry?
Yeah. No, another property, one was for sale, it's been sold.
Which one was?
It was just sold last week, Thermo Fisher, you know, sold for six point nine five million, and they have thirteen million dollars more to build up the property.
So there are no other transact, no other properties?
We didn't even know that was for sale. That's, that's what's to show you how, you don't, never know what's up for sale. For example, the state owns some land in Hampton Falls, they were gonna build something on it. They chose to, without notice, to sell it. It went up for sale, they were gonna build something on it, and they did it. All we have to do, and this is what to become compliant, is make land available so that by ordinance, which is to be as an overlay, permit workforce housing. That's all we are required to do.
But this, this vote does increase the value of those properties?
It can.
Yeah, I would think, because now, like you said, it could be ten million bucks now for whatever. Just wanna make sure the board is.
I had somebody with their hand up, alright, go ahead.
The word optimal has been used a lot. Nothing about Newington is optimal. Nothing about Newington is ever going to be optimal, because we are an anomaly. We are so different. When, as Realtors, you probably have some trouble when you're trying to do comps, and you're talking about Newington properties, because nothing comps to it. It is an entity of its own. So you see workforce housing going up in Fremont, New Hampshire, for instance, in Kingston, in Hampton, because they have land that is optimal, that is affordable, optimal, can build density, have highways, transportation, it's turnkey, it works for the seller and the developer. We don't have that. We are giving all we have. These areas off the highway, it's an overlay, people own it. If you can make it work, great. No guarantee can or will ever happen. But it's done, and Newington is on the right side of the fence when people come calling that could take our decisions for our beautiful town away from us. So optimal, we don't have it. We can't give what we don't have. Thank you.
I would like to see this board has looked at, over and over and over again, where we would like to have residential houses and where we would like to put it in the residential area, because that's ultimately where you would want to have house residential, in a residential area. But when you look at the residential area and you say workforce housing, there's a whole bunch of people who get up, not my neighborhood, we're not here, not there, we don't have sewer, the soils here aren't good, or we have contaminated soils here from P's, that's not good. And there's, there's a whole bunch of things that come up, that keep coming up over and over and over again. This board has looked back, and we kept looking back at, where is the best place to put it? We used to have that P's, we used to have workforce housing on P's, and the workforce housing went away when the air force closed and PD chose not to keep it there. And we were compliant, but that went away. And then we, we chose the drive-in theater, which was, we worked, kicked around for many years, and then the state bought it. So a lot of land has been taken from this, from this town by the state or the federal government, and it seems like every time we try to do something that would be acceptable, the most acceptable to the majority of the people in the town, this area keeps coming up as the best area, because the biggest thing was the sewer and utilities, and then the next thing was, you know, up against the residential area, become, becoming part of the residential community, which was a big part. We don't like having separate residential communities, and if you look at Patterson Lane, and you talk to the people down there, even though they were the first development, residential development in the entire, well, one of the entire Seacoast, but they've been in the entire town, industry is built up around them, and they feel left out, and it's true, because they're separate, they're just surrounded by industry, and they don't feel like they're a part of the group. And it's like, we do everything we can to try to keep them and encourage them to be a part of this, be a part of the residential town. But, so it's really hard for this town to try to find an area that works with, that has all the things combined that the state requires to do, and still be a part of this community. And this is what the board has kicked around for a long, long time and felt as though this was the best area to put it. Yes?
Katie Moody, Washington Park Lane. I just wanna commend you on that point, which is, you know, if suddenly there's fifty new dwellings and there's a whole lot of new families, it is gonna put pressure on the town, and there's gonna be all kinds of ways in which it has to be managed. But I think it, it's, from my perspective, mostly the possibility of the greatest success is by doing it in a way that incorporates new families into the town and into who we see ourselves as a town. And not separate, and not alienated as separate or different. It really will make a difference in the long run, in the quality of everybody's experience and all the ways that we're gonna have to expand to accommodate it, is if people really feel invested and a part of our fabulous town. So I commend you for thinking about that and doing that.
May I present the good board?
All of you.
I'd just like to add, Millian Hyde from Little Bay Road. I mean, typically, the people who are in need of a lot of this housing are not typically people who are like, "Let's go hang out at the elementary school," because they're typically younger people. So I don't know if that's kind of a red herring in my mind, like just, you're saying that, but a lot of these are younger people who are gonna be needing this housing, because they're the younger workforce. So if we're hanging our hat on that all of a sudden they're gonna be, you know, volunteering in large numbers in the town or something, I don't think that's gonna happen, the numbers don't show it. So anyway. You know, we don't, I mean, we don't think.
Well, I mean, that's just what the numbers say, who needs the workforce housing, so.
If these lots you chose sell next week, all of them, what's plan B? What's that? No, I'm sorry, yeah, I phrased that wrong. So if these, the three places, well, Fisher's already sold, you said, right? So if the other two sell next week before this whole process really gets going with the state, then, then.
I don't think you understand the process.
I don't think I do.
Alright, 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 one minute, Ken. All we have to do.
No, I understand that, yeah.
And it's, then we become compliant.
Right.
If the landowners want to make them available, they can. If they don't want to make them available, they can. They can do whatever they want.
Right, I guess my question was, if the landowners sold these parcels next week, would we, would the town then have to create alternative part on Shattuck or where? Okay.
Yes, Dennis, if you may, I'd like to just move over here so that everyone can hear this as well as the people home on the podcast. Is that alright, Chris? First, first, let me say, what I'm reading comes from the selectmen. And please keep in mind, we have been and are currently reviewing all aspects of this ordinance, and sought legal opinions. First, we support the state law intended to provide affordable housing. This housing serves our teachers, police, fire, electricians, plumbers, young professionals, and others that have an income up to a hundred thousand dollars. We want to strengthen the proposed workforce housing ordinance. Regardless of whether this passes, no one from the state, and let me say this again, no one from the state is going to come in and strike down the town's ordinances. Only the attorney general has that authority to bring a lawsuit seeking that. And there is nothing in the statutes that give anyone other than the agreed developer the right to challenge the ordinance. A developer's challenge would go to court for what is known as a builder's solution. Regardless whether this passes, this does not have to be the final word on workforce housing. The town can amend the ordinance. A town meeting can be called to address this issue. To strengthen the ordinance, we recommend the planning board initiate a review and revision process. The planning board should engage a professional to determine whether the town is meeting its obligation to provide fair, realistic, and reasonable opportunities for workforce housing now. Any such study needs to include the accessory dwelling units in town, which could be considered workforce housing if they meet workforce housing requirements. The planning board should also seek a second opinion. The planning board should also seek a second legal opinion to determine the ordinance and revisions comply with the state workforce housing law. This ordinance, while a good start, has some flaws, including that it does not seem to meet the requirement that the majority of the land in town that is zoned to permit residents uses also workforce housing. Providing a workforce housing overlay district adjacent to a residential area is likely not sufficient to survive a developer's challenge. Most importantly, we need to work together to strengthen this ordinance. It will have a long-lasting impact on our town, and we need to get it right. The selectmen should be included in the review process. They do have a role in the growth and development of our town and fiscal affairs. Thank you.
Could you explain what you just said? Are you in favor of this? Are you in favor of something stronger? I'm not exactly clear.
This is a draft that I've read, and we will be putting out a final document, but in the meantime, let me just say again, seek a second legal opinion. We support workforce housing. We also think we need to look at our proposed ordinance. We have an opportunity to go back in and revise it as necessary, conduct the housing inventory study, and go ahead and make any changes that's necessary. The most important thing is, though, we work together on this, it's gonna have a lasting impact on our town, and we need to get it right.
I absolutely agree. If I can just take a minute, and we have our great selection rep on the board, I guess I just still don't understand, are you saying the ordinance isn't strong enough? Or because we have some A to U's, that's enough?
We have sought, we have sought legal opinion, and this is a draft I'm reading from, so let me just say, we have sought legal opinion that recommends we reexamine the content of a law beyond the attorney that works for this board. Get a second opinion. If necessary, we go back in, modify it, change it, and strengthen it. Strengthening it is important, so if a developer comes to challenge it, we can stand the challenge and not have to end up with a builder's solution. That's our concern.
Great. Will you be willing to share your legal person's name and opinion so that we have that second?
Not at this point, but it's, when we do our article, we will. We've done more, we've done more than one or two. We are doing our due diligence, we are taking our time, and when we're done, we'll give you all the information. We have not, we have not completed.
Ken, we've had.
As a matter of fact, we were talking just tonight with an attorney, trying to draft right this, knowing I was gonna come in here tonight and speak.
So Ken, you said you have a second opinion, and you said we, we only use one attorney, you throw these bombs out there saying you don't seem to be in favor of this. We have a right to know who those attorneys are.
Dennis, in due time. Let me say, let me say, we have sought legal opinion.
From who?
We have sought legal opinions, and rather than arguing, here's the solution to the whole thing. Get a second, get a second legal opinion. Get a second legal opinion.
I need to say something important right now. I am beyond myself. I'm, I cannot believe that this, that the rift between the selectmen and the planning board is this broad. I cannot believe the selectmen is an entity here and the planning board is an entity over here. You guys are supposed to represent this town that we love. We want you guys working together. We want you guys working together to be united as a town. They will stand behind you. It cannot be a single entity, and I can see you guys doing this, and I've heard about this for years. I'm done with that. You guys need to all grow up, and you need to work together so we can take care of this town and take care of the issues that face it.
We agree.
Brenda?
Brenda Blonigan.
So do we.
Isn't there a selectman representative on the planning board, and Mr. Mark Coney, don't you attend all of the meetings? I'm sorry, but, I'm sorry, but Mr. Latchell, Mr. Latchell, I'm sorry, but we have a representative on the planning board who is the selectman, and I agree with Craig. It's not just a rift between the planning board and the selectmen. It seems like the selectmen have a rift between everyone. It's the fire department, not the police department, thank God, but, but I see this rift at every meeting that I go to. And for the, the representative on the planning board to leave tells me that it maybe isn't a rift between the planning board and the selectmen, it's a rift between the planning board and a selectman, not the selectman.
Ken, here's the thing, we've had several meetings, of which the selectmen have not attended, and I made sure that they were invited. And I've also had several meetings, it's on, it's been videotaped, where the selectmen have stated that they were against this ordinance and against the workforce housing ordinance. And then, and then, and then, and then, it is the case, and then, at, just look at it, hang on, put your hand down. And then, if you look at, at the last meeting that we had, which was, I think, last week, the selectmen's representatives stated, "I wanna make a clarification. We're not against workforce housing, we're against the way that the lots were chosen." And at the board, did I, did I get that wrong? Did I get it right?
Got it right.
Okay, so we got it right. It's, it's, it's been placed in a video, I mean, it's, it's there. We're trying to do what we can to make it work. We've been working on the master plan for several years, Ken, you were a part of that. You were against the housing, that, the way we were talking about workforce housing, and then it switched, and that was a surprise to us, caused us complete by surprise. We're doing everything we can to do workforce housing and to make us compliant. We're doing everything we can to do workforce housing and to make us compliant and to protect the town.
Dennis, we've never said you haven't. We agree with you.
I think the big white elephant in this room, and that is confusing, is that this is not, has nothing to do, is what has been rumored going around and has been said by the selectmen, is that you want residential uses at the mall. And you in fact asked the Planning Board...
Say that again, Dennis, that you said the selectmen said something...
The selectmen asked the Planning Board to do a study for mixed use, which included housing at the mall in the commercial district. This has nothing to do with that. And I think you might be confusing that with workforce housing.
I'm not confusing that at all.
I'm not. So, I think that's what is going on here, because workforce housing or housing at the mall has been coming up over and over again, has been presented to us by the selectmen, that this is probably gonna happen. And the reason why Ted Connor sat right here in this room before this board back in November and asked us to be open-minded, but we were, and we said we would commission a study at the selectmen's request. And we did. This has nothing to do with that.
You couldn't be more right. There's nothing to do with it. And we did ask for an independent study to give us the information so that the town voters will have the correct information to make an informed decision. You are right. Let me say again, nothing to do with that study is what we're talking about tonight. We support, Dennis, this ordinance that's going forward. What we're saying is, get a second opinion, strengthen it, so we can withstand a challenge.
Okay, so you're saying...
That's all we're saying, Dennis.
Are you saying we should shoot it down this year?
No!
The voters should vote for it?
Yes!
You guys need to work this out.
That's all I wanted to know.
Dennis, we have said, we have said right along, we support workforce housing. But, and I say but, this has to be very clear. We want to make sure that the ordinance is right and it will withstand a challenge. Our review, and we did not just do this over two days, as you know, since this ordinance has come to life. We have done our research, and we have investigated and run down every source we could and attended meetings. What we're saying is, strengthen it. But before you do that, get a second opinion. A second legal opinion. That's what we're saying. Thank you.
Thank you. That's helpful, because I think we're all on the same page.
Yes, we are.
I don't know what we're arguing about.
We're asking to participate, Dennis. We want to participate, and we want an ordinance that will withstand any challenge. And we've suggested how that might come about with revisions and changes. But I think what's key is, and I can't say it enough, get a second opinion, please. Seek a second opinion. And do your housing inventory. Accessory dwelling units play a major role in this ordinance.
We will be asking, I know there's a request from the selectmen to look at accessory dwelling units, and we're gonna be covering that later tonight.
And that's, that's why, because accessory dwelling units, in order to be counted under this law, have to meet the requirements. Thank you.
We have to make all, okay, we made every residence in the town, except for duplexes, eligible to have ADUs, every town, so we're compliant there. Go ahead.
Ann Highland Teber Gundelo landing. To be clear, two things. Nothing can be strengthened, modified, or reviewed if it is not voted in. That's the starting point. This law has been on the books since 2010. The law gets voted in, and then, as the Planning Board has said, they are going to review this as we move forward. On a technical note, the Planning Board is the elected land use board. Anyone in any position in this town may go to a Planning Board meeting to bring initiatives forward, to have them consider it. However, the Planning Board reports to the Planning Board and the citizens of this town. Input taken from anyone goes to them. They are the land use board.
Greg's been waiting.
I agree with that. I understand that. But, you know, something, you know, we gotta stand behind our selectmen too. And if they have an opinion about something as strongly as they do on this issue, I want to, I want to know about it. And I want these two entities to work together. I think we should table this issue for a while, and you guys need to work it out, and then we should have another gathering.
It's going for a vote through people this year.
As is.
We have to.
It's on the ballot.
This is not...
So in other words, we can say yes, or we can say no.
That's all right.
It's not the end. It can be revised, but it's a good start, Dennis.
And we said that. We've said that. We probably were, but we tried to take the best from three different towns that seem to make sense with what we're doing. So, that being the case, who's back there?
Ken Ernschraub. Just to sort of emphasize it a little bit more, I keep hearing that it can be revised and looked at, so let's get it started, let's get it voted in. I'm hopeful, Ken, that you and Mike and Ted will at least not say anything negative about it, or at least, are you gonna come out for it or against it? I haven't, I've heard sort of contradictory things. I'm talking about a town meeting when it's actually voted. Number one, number two, I am an attorney, and I can tell you, attorneys make money because there's an attorney on both sides. We can get a second opinion, then a third opinion, then a fourth opinion, and they're gonna continue to contradict each other, divide each other, and run up the bill. So, I don't know that a second opinion is the answer, as much as I respect the opinion of the select people.
Well, in terms, if I may respond to that, in terms of the lasting effect and how important it is to get it right, seek a second opinion who specializes in workforce housing to look at what we have and give suggestions where we go to make it stronger. I can't be any more clear than that. And I do want to say, contrary to Brenda's comments, we are working with all the various departments. Dennis and I work together. We speak, we convey. I speak with these other people here. The issue is, let's get it right, and let's do it together. There's no question, the Planning Board is the authority that makes the law. But I do think it's appropriate to include the selectmen in that process.
Emily?
Thank you. I'm just a little, well, first of all, I've been to a variety of meetings, you know, I'm slowly, you know, my kids are like, "You're going to another meeting tonight, momma?" But have slowly been going to more and more meetings. And I guess what, I've been in meetings where it's been the Planning Board and me and two other people. I guess what I'm the most confused about at this stage of the game, where the vote is coming up, that, you know, the, there continues to be sort of this idea or this back and forth about whether the selectmen support this, or whether or not they, they, you know, they don't. But I think at the end of the day, there's a selectman's rep who sits on the board. So I guess what I'm really confused about is, could someone explain to me what the purpose of that position is? Are they here as a selectman's rep? Because if they are, and then they're saying one thing, and then you're coming in the next week and saying another, it's very confusing as a voter.
I, I can only say this, that tonight, when I was actually writing this, we were meeting with an attorney. Mike came to the meeting.
Right. But the previous meetings?
We are not gonna say anything publicly until we've done our work. And we have not completed that yet, but we felt we were at the end of the line. We have to make a statement. And we've made this statement, and I want to say it again. Let's work together, get it right, and if items need to be addressed, which we think there are, address them, and let's tighten the ordinance and work together with it.
I'm still just trying to find out who owns these lots. That's what I'm trying to find out.
The state owns one.
How can we zone, state-owned land? That's what I don't understand.
We can rezone any land in the town. That's per this authority of this board, and what the state gave this town and this board to do. That's our authority.
So we, we do have the authority to zone their land owned by the state?
Sure, yeah.
I didn't know that. I didn't think we could. And then 25 Nimble Hill Road is Nest Lab or Thermo or whatever they call it, but they have been sold. Is that what you said?
Yeah, but it's still, the land can still be resold to somebody else.
Okay, so it doesn't matter who owns it. 25 Nimble Hill...
We're talking about the use, not the owner.
Is where Nest Lab is right now. Okay.
Jeff was next. You have still a question, Jeff?
I'm just, I just want to clarify. So, I think the two groups should work together. I mean, that's logical, why, why should there even be a vote of contention? But I want to clarify, Ken, hey, Ken, are you saying you think the vote should go forward on this and be approved, and then tighten it up later? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying, go ahead with the vote. There's no way we're gonna stop that. Go ahead with the vote.
And vote it up.
We support it. And then, don't stop there. Do the, do the revision, look at the review, and move ahead with that.
Ken, we stated that right from the very beginning, that we're willing to do that. Right from the very word go, when we brought this forward.
Dennis, you're absolutely right again. The issue was, though, that we're not gonna speak until we've done our homework. And we're now at the point where we have found suggestions that could be revisited. I'm not gonna say here, stand here and say, "This is right, that's wrong." We're suggesting a second look.
Okay, Ken, I applaud you for coming forward, saying that. I want to make it very clear that the selectman's representative said that he meant with the three selectmen, and that the three selectmen were not in favor of this. It's right on the YouTube recording that Emily did. You can hear it very clearly. It's in the minutes. It's been stated over and over again, and this is a revelation tonight that the selectmen...
Well, let's reel in this revelation. Make sure we reel it in. The last thing we need to do is have people going in 20 different directions. The revelation is, we support one, workforce housing, and we want to work with you to get it right. Up until this point, we're in no position to say right or wrong.
I'm just still struggling with the purpose of having a selectman rep if it's gonna go back and forth every time, because it's very confusing.
Mike should have bared down the issues that Ken's talking about.
Yes, and him leaving just muddies the water further, I feel, because, you know, you're saying he shouldn't have made a comment, but he did. So, you know what? At the end of the day, it doesn't matter. You've cleared the air tonight. But moving forward, as a resident, as a voter, as someone who's taking time to go to these meetings and record them, it is very, very frustrating to have an elected official say he's representing a board, and then have somebody come in three meetings later and say the exact opposite.
Yeah.
I was the person, Ann Highland Teber Gundelo landing. I was the person that asked Selectman Mark Conie...
All right, Ann, Ann.
In a...
It's already been stated. We're good.
In a, but the question was, I had my tablet. 14 months of selectmen's meetings. When was workforce housing on an agenda? It was not on. When was it discussed? It was not. There are no minutes. And the selectman's rep came forward with the selectmen were against this. He stated, I said, "When was it done? I don't know. Possibly a non-public meeting." That is on videotape. It is very clear. That's a problem.
Unfortunately, that's an unfortunate situation. I can tell you, and Ken, as an attorney, you can verify, that when we've talked about this, it's with legal counsel. And legal counsel discussion together is legal, and it's a non-meeting. We're not gonna put that information out. So, Ann...
That's correct.
We can do that.
I understand.
And we have done that, and we are continuing to do that. There's been nothing other than that type of discussion with legal counsel.
The selectman's rep went on and answered that.
Jack?
And would not.
Ann?
Just...
I'm sorry.
Just, just a reminder for everybody here and all those out in YouTube land, one week from tomorrow, from 11:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night, make yourself heard. Your chance to vote up or down. You will get three ballots. One is the same in colored zoning. It's on the back. Make sure it's a two-sided ballot, which people are not used to. Article number six. You can't amend it, you can't change it, like you can at a town meeting. You gotta vote it the way it's written, and you gotta support. I can't, as this moderator, I can't be pro or con, but you can see who you want to support.
So, this is what I'm gonna say about everything. We know this is a contentious issue. We don't like the position that the state has put, all the towns in mandating certain things happen. We have a certain lifestyle that we like in our town, and we like to maintain it, and people don't like change. What this board has been trying to do, and it's hard to understand it and to go along with it, is propose a potential change that could happen in this town that's being enforced to us by the live free or die state legislators, who decided that this is something we need to look at. We have kicked this down, Ken, down the road for 10 years, and we've been fortunate. If you look at, if you look at what is being proposed and what is coming forward to the state legislature right now, we feel as though if we don't do something, that something could possibly happen to us, and this is basically what we're placing forward. We had to look at the resident, we had to look, I see you, Greg, I'll get you as soon as I'm done. We had to look forward to this coming year and what we think could possibly happen with the state legislature and the new rules and regulations. Do we want to take the chance and roll the dice, not have anything standing and ready to protect the town? Is it perfect? Probably not. Like any ordinances that we have, especially new ordinances, you put it into place and you tweak it. And I'm glad the selectmen have come forward and said they're gonna support that as long as we are willing to also look at it this coming year and tweak it. I do think we have the right location. I do think that we have the residential area and trying to keep the residential area as a whole combined. And I think this is something we can do. And I also think that this land is not gonna become available very quickly for housing. I think it's gonna take a while for someone to develop that, and it's not gonna happen right away. So it gives us some time. It gives us some time to work. If we don't do anything to give us some time to work, it could happen this year, and we're not ready. So I think it's something we should do and put in place this year, and I ask that everyone support the Planning Board in what we have tried to do. This has been a hard, hard issue for us to work with. This board has always done nothing but look forward to protecting this town, and has always protected this town. And I think that's something that I'm really proud of with this board and what it's doing. This is a tough, tough issue. You know, it's like, you know, it's just something that, well, all right, I gotta go give my kids some shots, 'cause they gotta go to school, but they gotta get the shots, and I don't want to see my kid get the shot, and I'm gonna cover my eyes and, and like, all right, it's gonna happen, but you know it's for the good of the kid that's gotta go to school. It's sort of, in some ways, it's sort of the same thing. Maybe it's not the same, you know, a good analogy, but we've got to do something, or otherwise, we won't, I don't think we're gonna do anything to protect the town. So, if there's anyone else who wants to add to that, that's fine, but I'm gonna ask Greg, he's been sitting here trying to get my attention.
Well, it's just that after Ken talked, it seems to me, and something I would like to see, and also initially was an option, or options, all we had was this one choice, yes or no. I would have liked to have seen options. There were none. So, I think maybe if you guys would have worked together, there could have been options created that might have served the town better. And then the other thing was, when I had the, at the last meeting, we had talked about housing, and I was curious if these were gonna be units people were going to purchase to become residents, and your answer was no apartments. So, people living in apartments?
No, 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 no. It could be condos, it could be houses, it could be apartments.
Well, I had asked you last time, and you said apartments, so I'm thinking, oh, I'm gonna go for apartments.
It can be apartments, but it can be any type of dwelling that is, that is legal. All right? It could be any kind of dwelling.
I just would like to have seen options, 'cause I don't, I'm not happy about the location.
So let me talk to you about the options. We've been talking about options for the last 10 years. And unfortunately, none of, nobody has been here. We've been, the board's been working on it and trying to figure out how to do that. And we go out, and we do master plan lookouts, and we do charrettes, we do questionnaires, we do all kinds of things to try to make it right. And we have a good cross-section of the town here, right on this board, trying to figure out, how do we do this, and what do we do to protect the town? This is a tough, tough issue that we all have to face.
Fire, calling...
Stay? Oh, all right. So, is that you? Say, oh, all right, so, does that get you a question?
Ross, you wanna answer?
Well, you know, I was gonna address, I think, both Craig and Ken, and, and say that, you know what? Voting for this amendment would be to vote to start having something on the books addressing workforce housing. If we decide later that we wanna change that ordinance, we have the ability to do that. It, of course, would be another amendment that would go to town meeting and town vote.
You can withdraw the overlay.
Right, or, or to come up with a different area for workforce housing, or, or do something different. Not, not that I'm, I'm recommending that, because I'm really not. I, I'm, I'm recommending voting for this ordinance to get something on the books concerning workforce housing to protect the town. And then, if it comes up later that there's a better way to do it, or a better location to, to put workforce housing, we can address that and modify the ordinance at that time.
We looked at several different towns that would seem to be comparable and took what we considered to be the best. We talked to our attorney. We've also, I've also talked to the municipal, the municipal association. I talked to David Choate, who was at the Economic Development Committee. We went to something called REEDC. Chris, what was it?
Regional Economic Development.
Regional Economic Development Committee. They had housing specials going on. We went there. We, they talked about things there. We've been looking at this a real lot. This is not just something all of a sudden we just came up, oh, we just gotta do it.
It did kind of pop up to me. I mean, I don't follow town, you know, what's going on. You guys all, we gotta think about workforce housing.
Well, each year, we have to go through, and we have to work through the, what ordinances we wanna change, or is there anything that's out of date and we need to look at? Believe it or not, housing is one of the things that pops up every year, every year. And we put forward to the town, these are the things that we think need some consideration, ought to change, to stay up to date. And that's what we're doing. So when you say all of a sudden, there's only a small window we have, like November to, and then January, to do things. And the end of January is the last day we can have an actual formal meeting that has to go forward to the town at that point. You can't produce, you can't bring anything forward at the end of January and just introduce it at that particular time. So, every single year, we have a small window to look at a whole lot of stuff that's been covered over the last year. So, it's, it's, it's a lot of hard work, and we try to
I understand that.
And we try to do that, and unfortunately, people have their lives. And I think I've put their trust into the different boards, the selectmen, the conservation board, zoning board of adjustment, all the boards, to do what they consider to be the very best that they can for the town. This board has been very consistent on its zoning. For many years, we've held the line. There are a lot of people that'll come in here and change what we do, and we would love to change the way of our lives if they could profit from it. What we have to do is do what we can, 'cause we all live here.
Yeah.
We don't wanna see this town go to a bad place. We wanna see it go to a good place and keep it there. And we are in a good place.
Just one quick comment. The town has a website, and they list agendas and amendments every board. And if you wanna know what's going on, I've got plenty. But when's their next meeting? What's their agenda? It's something, so it's been posted that they've been working on the ordinance as well. The zoning, you know, for long cuts.
See, the agenda's not much, man.
Well, the agenda's there. It's there usually within
The agenda's in the minutes. There's a section called agendas in the minutes. You have to scroll down to agendas, or you scroll down to that.
Yeah.
And then you go to the minutes, right?
I think one of them did, I don't know the size of which, I think the
But, so you can look at, right now, you can look at, and, and you can see the proposed zoning amendments. And then you can see an explanation in that zoning amendment that basically got a part of it in the mail on Friday, I believe. Most, it was supposed to go out last Wednesday, but it never got through the post office. Came out finally on Friday.
Ten years worth of amendments.
Right.
It's plenty to fight off.
It's, it's just, it's just a really big deal for a little eight-hundred population town.
Okay, so
And what I'm saying is, if we don't do anything, and the state pushes us to, to do something, that's bad. If we do this, and the land gets sold in, in a bunch of units, let's say, who knows? Two hundred people? Who knows? So I'm just saying, to me, it's, it's not so much a good thing. But I do understand for the town that this place is growing. This area is growing. It's a boomtown. So I know all communities have to, have to do something, have to do their part. But I understand a little town, do we have to do such a big chunk? I'd just like to see the outdoor theater get switched over.
Let me tell you, let me tell you what, let me tell you what the law says. I want you to understand what the law says. The law says that we have to make the majority of the residential area available for workforce housing.
The majority of our residential?
The majority of the residential area open to workforce housing. If you look, the majority of the residential area, we, we are covered under two, and then the law also says another thing. It says, it can be easy use accessory dwelling units, which, which is allowed through our entire residential area and all homes except duplexes. But all single-family homes, you can put an accessory dwelling unit. An accessory dwelling unit can basically be one portion of the two parts for workforce housing. The second part, that's for single-family housing. The second part is multifamily housing. Multifamily housing, again, they say the majority of the residential area. But I think you're gonna find out what, what, this is what our attorneys and, and people that I have talked to specifically says, that we can't basically, for the most part, get multifamily units a lot in the residential area because there's no sewage, and the soils are not the best. But we can get some in there scattered in and out of different places based on the type of soils that are there. So putting that aside is, we said, what is the best next place to put it? And we said, all right, since the soils aren't the greatest, and they would like to see like fifty units or forty units, or some, some bigger number to make it profitable, it has to be something that they, the developer can make it work on. Where's the best place to put it? And that's the best place to put it is where the sewer is and where the utilities are. That's why we chose the area. Plus, we want it to be attached to the residential area. If for some reason the mall were to come in and say, "We wanna put workforce housing at the mall." Like, if you look at the Bedford Mall, the Bedford Mall right now, you're looking at two hundred units that have been proposed.
That's not workforce housing.
But that's not workforce housing.
Market rate housing.
That's market rate housing. But, same sort of thing. It's not, market rate housing is not zoned for the, for the, for the mall. So, I just try to say, I wanna make sure people aren't confusing the two things. But a lot of the malls are being developed, redeveloped with residential, so.
I know, it's just, it's just a big deal, and it sounds like it's all at the appeasement of the state to get them off your back. And I understand that. You've been under a lot of pressure. "No, no, it's been ten years." I know, I understand that. But, the thing there, it said, "We can't do it residential, 'cause we don't have a subject." So I'm like, oh, well, then we're done. We don't have to, you know, we don't have to worry about the state, because we have a subject.
If we don't have, if we don't become compliant, then they can hook into wherever they want, wherever the sewer lines are.
Right.
Keep that in mind.
Or wherever they want to extend the sewer lines to.
Wherever they want to extend.
At the community's expense.
That's right.
That's expensive.
And that's what you found out, Chris? It was at the community's expense?
Well, it's always at the community's expense, of which you can do a prorated share to the new development.
That's correct.
However, every place along the way will be assessed as needing to contribute. And if it's already a lot that has a subject system, unless you mandate that that dwelling connect, then the cost for the, for that portion is governed by the town, which across all of us. If I can say one more thing, and that the, the multi-family requirement is completely not compatible. First thing that I could look at for Newington's housing, residential housing description. First premonist, I think, is in our master plan, and it's passed on since the building was ever put in this town, is to maintain the rural character. And that's what makes our residential not just rural, not just residential, but rural in nature that this community grew up. Multifamily will be a hard thing to put next to somebody. And to have that under landowner who's already built a house there, have he, she, or he believe that they're still in a rural environment. So I, on the board, look at every proposal that way. This particular land, we've looked at an area adjacent, the chairman has pointed out. And we could go to the other side of the highway. But there, as soon as you cross the highway, the cost of the land per acre goes up quite rapidly. The area in the mall may have housing of some sort on it someday if the community votes. And it's proposed. And same with the office and the, and the industrial area. So when you look at that way, we pick the area where, where the cost of land for non-residential area is the lowest. It's an office, commercial area, the land on the other side of the mall is two to three times that.
Channing Shattuck is more valuable?
Yes, yes. And the reason for that is that has the potential for industry and office, which provides better return. The reason we're looking in, want to, we selected these areas is that the cost per acre is lowest. And if the cost of the land is lowest, that allows more units to be afforded, workforce housing units. When you see workforce housing in Portsmouth and other areas where land is extremely expensive, as the Hyatt's mentioned, they're very on top of, I think developers or realtors are very aware of how expensive housing is. The proportion that you can put aside for workforce housing gets smaller and smaller. I've not seen a development in Portsmouth that has allocated more than fifteen percent to workforce housing. That usually shrinks as the development goes along and costs go up. We're looking in an area where it can work and have workforce housing with up to seventy-five percent of, of, of the building being workforce housing. And that means to be not only compliant, but to do a reasonable share of workforce housing to keep workforce out there. We don't have to double it the size of the town. We can have two, three, four buildings, and we will have a good contribution to the workforce housing for the people that earn lower wages but need to be in this area.
What's the minimum amount you need to require that you guys, you're gonna allow a builder to build for? How many dwellings?
There's no, there is no minimum.
So if a builder came to you with twenty units, you could just say, "No."
No, 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 no. It's based on density.
No.
And if you read the ordinance, it's based on how dense, how dense you can put. You have to have forty percent green space. You have to, I think, the sixty percent
Right.
other space includes the all-hard surfaces.
But I would doubt, I would doubt anybody would try to come in with a minimum number. They, usually developers wanna push the maximum.
They've done a study for maximum, though, right?
No.
No, there was done. There was done.
I didn't have that number.
P's Development Authority went through a whole process just recently, and they had multiple developers come in. And they said, if we were to put housing at the P's authority on their land, the minimum they needed was two hundred units. And that's for regular housing to make it work. Regular housing.
I think Greg was referring to, you were referring to the parcels that we identified, though, right?
The three parcels identified, what would be the maximum?
It depends upon the wetlands that are there and other
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you did a test, that forty percent, like you say, green space, what would be the maximum?
It's
Craig, Craig was saying, pulling her down, did the breakdown. I think fifteen acres per parcel for the drive-in theater, from my estimate, which is not a developer, but seeing developments for over twenty years, probably maybe four acres that you could put actual buildings on.
And it was like forty-seven units or something?
I was estimating you could put eight units per floor. So that's like twenty-four to thirty per building, and then
How many buildings?
Chris, Chris, you're going down a path right now, trying to answer specifically.
We don't, we don't, we don't, we don't have an answer.
Well, someone's got an estimate.
Yes, I think you could have, of the fifteen acres, you can get about forty-five. That's maybe a third of the land you could build on with all the other things that were, that are needed to put in a residential area. Okay? Numbers like that aren't available until you get a specific proposal. So you're looking at a maximum of, of whatever the developer proposes. If he proposes a six-story building, that adds three more floors. Okay? Can he support that? Not sure. But we have to look at a developer.
Well, so any quiz, though? Even though we have a height standard?
We have a height standard.
Yep. By our court and ordinances, you can. But if we don't have some area where workforce housing is allowed, okay? Then our rules get thrown out. And this is what's the imperative this year. While laws going forward are going to push for housing of any type, because housing is so shortage. And although it's been ten years since the law was put in place, we become extremely morbid by accelerated review and other
The numbers would be up to a developer to come forward and present to us, because we don't know if they want one, two, or three bedrooms, or just little tiny efficiency or just, or just, or just tiny efficient, efficiency apartments. We don't know what they wanna put in.
We can't say no, though.
We can say no up to, within the regulations that we have. And that's what you need to read as far as the density. That's what you need to look at. They can't build out like ten thousand units.
Can override our, our, our regulations.
They can try. They can go to a tribunal of judges, as we already said, starting June first, to ask, to say. But if we have nothing, the judge is gonna say, "Go, if you can build it, go do it."
Well, it sounds like it doesn't matter whether you have it or you don't. They're gonna, they're gonna, they can override and do what they want. I know, no, I, I know what you're saying. If we give them the okay, if we go ahead and allow the overlay, then a developer can come in, and he wants to build
So, let me ask you a question. Do you think some, you know, someone this year is gonna go and wanna build in the drive-in theater? Do you think, do you think someone's gonna wanna go and build in the other places? All right, so we set aside those places. We are now compliant.
Right.
If they decide they wanna come someplace else, they can't say, "Oh, you're not compliant, because we are." And we have somewhat, we have a lot of control then of what they can and can't do and where they're gonna put it. If we have nothing, if this doesn't pass, we have nothing.
So we
This board has done and presented to the town for a vote to decide where the people wanna go. And we're trying to inform you based on the best information that we have available, including attorneys, of what we should do.
So if, if we allow the overlay, okay, and, and we give the state what they're asking all these communities to do, and I understand that, and a developer comes in and he wants to do more, then
He has to, he has to
He'll have to find us if we don't want them to build these big, some kind of big massive units. But we have more power then than if we did nothing, is what you're saying.
Yes, yes. That's all this is about.
So in other words, by allowing the overlay, it gives us a measure of control.
Yes.
Okay, well, I didn't hear any of that.
We've been
No, 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 no. All you're saying, that, no, I'm hearing, they can do whatever they want. I'm hearing
You don't have a rule.
But the other thing is, the developer is gonna wanna get his pound price. I don't see a developer putting in, you know, moderate, he wants top dollar. So I don't think anything may even happen. But it could, is all I'm saying.
But if we do nothing, they can build as high as they want, wherever they want.
Well, well, yeah, but they haven't pushed that yet, so the state hasn't gone around done that.
No, they can. A developer can come in.
No, no, I mean the state.
The state, okay. We, we just keep going over the same thing over and over and over again, so I've gotta try to Jim, you want to say something?
I was gonna try to help Craig. Craig, I'll say, just, I'll do it as quick as possible. Think of it this simply. We can choose a site that we know may not work, may work, but it's viable. But we meet and check the box, which means we don't know what's gonna happen, but we're not gonna have a surprise. Then, we have the other option to do nothing, and they can come in here, and then we're on the offense, and we're having to fight for it.
Picture, Spock.
We now can defend our position, and we may compromise. We may prevail. We may choose, I completely disagreed with Ken stating in the board of selectmen that we should be bringing in another attorney now. We don't bring in more expense now. You wait until there's an action. You see what the action is. Thank you back there. Thank you, by the way. You wait until you see what the action is by the entity that's coming in to build, and then you bring in an attorney, or you bring in someone to do a study that can better answer the question more specifically than a general one which won't. That's it.
Sorry. Just made a real question. Remember when they started to put the dog ordinance in, they had leashes everywhere. People didn't like that. Last town meeting, somebody put an amendment to the ordinance in to make it more likable, and it passed, and they changed the ordinance. What they can do is they go back a year from now and reword that ordinance to everybody's liking, if they like it right now. And we can, the lease will on the books covered, so that no one can come in and do what they want.
It's not likely these lots are gonna be developed during the next couple of years.
I agree. I agree, yeah. No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, it's still, I kept hearing from you guys about the developer's gonna build the state, and then they can, then you can do what you want anyway, and we may have to build.
If we don't have anything in place.
If we have nothing in place.
Remember, if we don't have something, this is putting something in place. A yes vote means you're protecting the town.
Right.
Giving us some coverage, some protection.
Well
A lot more protection, a lot of protection. If we do nothing, we are wide open.
Well, we'll see, but we've got a week to go, right? We can
You know what? I feel good no matter, I feel good, I feel good we've done, I feel like we've done everything we can.
I just, I just, selectmen was a, threw a monkey wrench into the whole thing. I mean, but, but it just kind of was beyond me that I, I wanna see you guys work together. I wanna see this more. I, I know Mike should have spoke up more, and he could, should have made the selectmen's opinions more known, so that you guys are on the same page. I don't, maybe he's got an actually ride. I don't know, but I'd like to see our town bodies work together.
I won't interrupt that for one second. You have a, at least in all towns, the only thing I can say is, a rep on a board You have a, at least in all towns, the only thing I can say is, a rep on a board should represent where their, the constituency that they represent. That's the best you can do. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't work.
All right, thank you. I think we're gonna end this for tonight. I think we've.
Last words, I applaud the board for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree.
All right, we're gonna end this right now. We're gonna have a couple of clean issues we need to resolve tonight and a couple of issues we need to bring up. So I just wanted to like, if anyone wants to stay for them, you can, it shouldn't take long. But thank you for coming, we certainly appreciate it and I'm glad people showed up. Kinda late. I really wish people had come to this sooner. All right, so we have, let's look out the ADUs. Oh, yes, we, all right, so tonight we have someone that is unexpected.
Pull up a chair.
Pull up a chair.
Amanda.
Amanda, Amanda's here, she would like to put in a pet?
Dog daycare.
Dog daycare.
Dog daycare at Gosling Road, where the, near to the dance studio, was that?
Right now, it used to be the batting cages, one seventeen Gosling, the big batting cages. The owner there is redeveloping that.
So that is zoned for what?
I think it's office.
Is it office?
It's commercial.
I think.
It's a commercial.
And it might have a.
I might be the only silly person on this board, but I have no idea where the batting cages are.
Commercial.
Yes, commercial, yep.
So if, if you, if, I don't know how many people have the zoning ordinance as handy. I don't know how many people have the zoning ordinance as handy, but you ought to look up. The purpose of this discussion tonight with Amanda is to determine whether or not you feel this is a permitted use. So if you read on page Z twelve, the use is permitted on section three B, maybe you could render an opinion.
The, I would like to say the buildings inspector and John perhaps so far feel it's not listed, so it's not a permitted use. All right, so I just want to make sure that everyone understands it could be a matter of interpretation. But John, why don't you go ahead and read that, I don't think everyone has the ordinance.
So here's what the ordinance says. Use is permitted in the commercial district. Retail, offices, research and development facilities, light manufacturing, restaurants, motels, hotels, theaters, storage facilities, barber and beauty shops, laundries, repair shops, places for public worship, indoor recreational facilities such as bowling alleys, roller skating rinks and vehicle dealers, sale, rental and leasing, hospitals, nursing homes, schools, conference centers and facilities to treat the developmentally disabled. So my problem is you have a permissive zoning ordinance. It says what you can do. It doesn't say and the like and similar uses.
We have a, we also have something that goes in under the general requirement if you read it that says if it's not listed, it's not a permitted use. All right, so it's very clear about that.
So Amanda called me and said, this, she wants to do this, she had an engineer that called on her behalf. And I said, I don't think it's permitted, I ran it by the building inspector, he agreed. I don't think it's a bad use for the property, but I said, I think you need to go to the zoning board of adjustment. But I, you guys may read this as, as the interpreter of the zoning ordinance and say, "You're all wet." And if you think I'm all wet, hallelujah.
I think John, the building inspector, I've got it right, I wanted to make sure. And she asked about coming in, not trying to spend a lot of time.
Not a lot of time.
She just wants to be some.
I just want a direction.
No, tonight's was short.
I told, I told her tonight's meeting might be fifteen minutes and it turns out it's about
Two hours.
Two hours longer than that, but.
Amanda, what's your last name?
Field.
So I know we're hitting you by surprise with this, but I think at the very least if she wants to go, there's probably to the ZBA unless the board feels strongly different about a, a doggy daycare.
Was the indoor recreational one?
Says indoor recreation facilities such as bowling alleys, roller skating rinks and veh- and vehicle dealers.
How is a vehicle dealer an entertainment, a recreational facility?
How about a cafe in the.
Well, I don't, I think.
You're selling cars, how is that indoor recreation?
Are you an English major? I think the "an" is wrong. I think it should, I think it should have said a semi-colon vehicle dealer. Yeah, I agree.
It's not supposed to be an indoor recreation.
Make it a doggy daycare where the people can bring their dogs and run.
And roller skating.
Indoor recreation.
I have a question. Down where the Red Lobster used to be, that's a veterinarian thing.
That's across the street from the office district.
That's the office district.
That's my question too on the ordinance is where do like grooming shops, veterinarians, things like that.
In the office district.
It's office, okay.
That's where we have a veterinarian right now.
Oh, okay, so.
Jim?
What's the address? Cause I have.
One seventeen Gosling.
Chris?
It's right on the Portsmouth line.
Yep, I'll see you in a second. Thank you.
This is second or third building, I think.
I think it's second.
I think a little broader view of the commercial district rather than specifically what's listed. Obviously, commercial is retail, the mall's in there. But it also provides commercial services, whether it's rocks to watch repair, auto repair, servicing for beauty parlors, other things. I think this is a, a commercial service. It may have particular proportions and the reason it's brought in here is that there is, depending on how it's set up, with, with pet sitting, you can't control the pets as far as volume. If it's outside or they are walked outside, there is a lot of barking noise. Okay, that's been the problem across Dover Point. The, when there used to be a daycare sent over there for, for pets, that there was excessive bark. Didn't matter so much because of the highway. However, it did bother a lot of people that went to the restaurants and it was constant barking. Then that may have been a particular issue in the way it was, was run. Dogs left out in the cold and excessively. So from the standpoint, but I believe the commercial area is for services. And we do list some services for automobiles, beauty parlors and different things. And so I think it's, it needs more of a commercial service there.
I, I would agree, I mean, none of these things go together. They, they don't. It's very bizarre. I mean, really, we're gonna put developmentally disabled people in a batting cages? I mean, it doesn't make sense to me. And I, I think, I, quite frankly, as an animal lover, I think it's an indoor recreational facility for dogs.
Would you have outdoor runs or no?
Yes.
Certainly a similar use.
Do you have outdoor runs?
We do. I mean, that's all these, obviously we'd have to go through the planning board process, then, you know, bring our engineer in to show you sort of how it, how it looks and obviously get our approvals there. I know that there's either a one-step ZBA and then planning or just planning, so happy to do whatever.
The thing, I mean, I just wonder if it's, I don't know the history because I haven't been here long enough. I don't know if things just kept getting added every time somebody wanted to come to the commercial district. You know, doggy daycare tends to be a newer phenomenon, at least in this area of the country. You know, we treat our animals better now than we did ten years ago. And so I, I want, I, I don't know enough to know whether it's just got left off because nobody asked. Or, I mean.
And that's the problem with zoning. I mean, you know, twenty years ago, when, you know, when these ordinances were written, nobody knew about doggy, you know, doggy daycare. You know, and, and a lot of ordinance are, a lot of ordinances are written differently. They would say, you know, and use is similar to, or, but you don't have that. You, you have a list and if it's not on the list, and I feel awful, right? I mean, I, I, I think it's not, probably not a bad use over there, but.
So let me ask you, I just gotta look at the compatibility of the, of the surrounding, and you said exterior walks. And so I look at that as possibly some barking or things of that nature, doggy poo cleanup and so forth. I know you can clean that up.
Okay.
Does this match with the butters directly next door or is this gonna be, you come in there and they're leaving? And that's the kind of thing that, I know it's not our concern in a way, but at the same time, I just want to make sure we're not allowing a permitted, I list, I use is not permitted, that could get in there and basically sort of like not work for the, for the particular zone.
Right. So I, I mean, I can only go, the owner of that building is, has come to our other location and has witnessed, you know, our sort of plan in action. We're not allowed facility, I can't say here and say there's never gonna be barking, that we're not barking. But we traditionally choose locations where it's being, I mean, that building itself, it's not like there's residential housing around it. I can say that I have a, have a daycare in Hampton, which three of our four butters are residential housing. Yep, and, and then we have McDonald's. We're sort of like a, a little mix right there. So it's McDonald's on one side and then it's residential housing, residential housing, residential housing, residential housing, and then two in the back. So we're completely surrounded and we, we've always done really, really well.
I think it's odd for us to try to visualize what's, I think you're giving a good description.
Yep. And it's, and I think it's something that we'll bridge to with the planning board. I mean, we'll be able, I'm not as prepared as I would be, you know.
Yeah, she came, you came here tonight totally unprepared.
So like I usually have, I have pictures, I can bring in videos and let you see sort of like how we operate. And obviously, when it comes to our build-out, when it comes to all of those things, those are something that is, I base and throw at you and you get your approvals, obviously we can't go any further. At this point, I'm just curious if I do the two steps, it comes to ZBA and then come to the planning board or if I just come to the planning board.
Chris, you want to say something?
The, this particular site is the, where it was completely recently before the board. Unfortunately, in my mind, this site is severely compromised in that there is no real outdoor area. The, almost every square foot on the side of the building and in the front is paved. There is a small, there's half the normal setback from Bobby's road, that's for snow storage. There is no, the drainage systems go directly into a wetland without treatment. So unless you're talking about putting in substantial underground treatment for even an area that you clean up, urine will go immediately into the ground and go out there. Right, so unfortunately, and in the back.
I do have.
And it's right on wet.
So, so the, the primary outdoor space that we would be looking for is to use what is currently the loading dock. Because we will not need a, need a loading dock in that, it's in the rear of the building. We also elevate our play space, we aftrochar our play space so that it's safe for dog speed. And again, it's something that I would get into further down. We also have in the past at our Wyndham facility, we've had, we've built a, a treatment underneath its crushed stone and it, it permeates and does whatever, if there is ever any PR solid waste gets picked up. We're also in our Exeter facility, we're right next door to the, the, the river that flows into the water treatment center. And we dealt heavily with the.
Okay, so I think what Chris, I think what Chris is trying to say to you that you're not hearing is there's not enough parking here for all the businesses that are already. And if you're now saying we need more space and maybe.
If you're gonna put anything on a loading dock, that loading dock and that parking in the back does not have barriers. It goes directly not into a treatment well, into wetlands.
I think that that was paid for a while.
So, so, so let's get back on track here for one thing. The parking is gonna be an issue. The bigger, and if you're gonna be using the empty area, you have an issue because it's every inch is spoken for. The issue is, is this use, do we consider this use as a possibility for this particular zone? That's the question for her tonight. She is then gonna come forward with, here's what the plan is, here's the space I'm gonna have, here's the parking I need or don't need, and here's the space I'm going to use exterior, that's gonna use our park. If there's, all those questions are different things. The question tonight is, do we think that this is a, would be a permitted use? Jim?
I add, John, you said it very well. Ten years ago, there was no such thing as doggy parks. Today, there is. So I believe that we need to reconsider the zone. And I pulled up on my phone, it's already gone. I pulled up on my phone and I started to look at all the businesses and I got battery, battery bulbs and plus an orchards, clothing design and a karate dojo. And then behind that is the doggy park. So you don't know whatever is going to go future into those buildings that may conflict. So I guess if I had to throw out what my gut is, my gut is I absolutely think we should add it to the applicable uses. However, we also have to add a supplement to it that if there are any cleanups, any noise, any things like that that have to be dealt with, for you, like for example, your doggy room. Right now, you've got no one to worry about. But if a company moved that had office workers there, they're not gonna want your dogs outside. Wouldn't they, I would love to, but they may not. And if they don't, then you would have to build an enclosure or do, you'd have to have something, we'd have to put on the thing. But I think that it would be, as Chris said, this is a service, it's an area that, it's not on the river, it's not by Woodbury Avenue, it's kind of in a dead zone. Therefore, if we can come up with a good use and I'm an animal lover, I think that it would be a wonderful thing.
All right. I think at this particular point, my gut is that we probably should go to the ZBA is what I'm thinking and ask them for. Cause right now, we don't have the authority to change what's in here.
No.
I was hoping that we could find a thread that would say, "Yeah, it's kind of, it's sort of like one of these uses, but it's not." So I think the best thing to do and think to be fair to everybody, that maybe that's the best thing. I think, John, you're meeting on the thirty, this ZBA?
Yes, you're not gonna make it, but I said, you have the, well, you have, you have, because it's a, it's, it's a, I told you, it's, it's, it's gonna be a tough one. But get me the application and we'll schedule as soon as possible.
So I think that's what we need. I was hoping that we're gonna have to be able to find that thread. Cause I like the use too, to be very honest with you, but it's one of those things, I think we should not probably, where we couldn't make a connection to this. I was hoping to see something in there, but I don't see it.
Okay.
Okay?
Works for me.
But I like the idea that, like Chris was saying, it's a service. And I think a service like that is gonna be pre-built into the community. On the way to the community to get your service, they're also gonna stop at a different store, a Macy's and whatever. It's gonna, it's good for economic development. And I think that's something that we always have to consider. I think it's something also that is gonna be a good use overall because that's what people are gonna see. I, I mean, I go to a store now, I see people in Macy's with dogs, you know? They're there and there all the time, never mind Home Depot and all these other places. So I think we ought to look at that this coming year as a possibly permitted use someplace to allow that. But right now, I, I think if we try to do it, I think we're gonna be overreaching our authority. And Chris is trying to say, "Yes, good, I just want to make sure we get it right."
Okay.
Is that fair?
That's fair, works for me.
And thank you for waiting for us tonight. What do you think of the meeting tonight?
A lot of passion, I'm on board.
But you know what's a good thing versus people who don't show up?
I like it, I like it, let's do it.
All right, so is that okay, Amanda?
That works, thank you.
John, you've got the, she needs for the ZBA.
Already sent it over.
Yep, I'm on it, I will send it.
Like I said, I hope we could do it, but here's a couple more things we need to do unless there's some more questions for us.
Thank you so much.
Stay in touch with John.
I will.
Pleasure meeting you.
Yes, same, thank you all. Have a great night.
Do you have any questions?
I thought you did.
Erica, answer your question. The original, my interpretation, just my opinion, statistics were set up.
You're right.
Was first put in place.
I didn't, I didn't anticipate somebody board member showing up.
To ensure that everything that was currently there is listed.
That's what it seems, yeah, it seems kind of like.
So that there was not a non-compliant, if it was acceptable in particular, that's a big difference. Since been amended on a case-by-case basis, the introduction of disabled schooling was put in because of a number of logical parameters that you have to be so many feet from, you know, certain detrimental impacts to school some and other things. So, and that was, and it was a different school that tended to be in an area of high activity because the disabled students that they're trying to do, they want to expose them to noises and clanging and things that, that they needed to be exposed to rather than sheltered.
Sheltered, that makes sense.
All right, so something else is on the agenda tonight that I wanted to bring up on the other businesses. Selectmen have sent all of us a letter concerning ADUs. All right, so did all of you receive that?
Yep.
I didn't get a packet, so.
No, there's no packet.
We just got an email.
Sign was supposed to be just.
An email.
Sign, yeah.
Just a work session.
Earned. And an email went out to all the planning board members. And on there, it says there have been comments issued by the selectmen that are, selectmen are not in favor of workforce housing. And to be clear, the board is in favor of workforce housing in compliance with state law. That's what they said, but when it first came out, so, yeah, the selectmen have requested the planning board also conduct a survey on ADUs in town and ask each occupant and owner to voluntarily provide information on the rental amount charged for the ADU, if any. And is the ADU being used by a family member or available as a rental unit? So with that, I'm looking at, again, another study. I don't recommend, but.
Is that something we can just send out though? They're just asking those two questions.
Well, here's, here's the thing, I want to ask you. There are a lot of people in town that have apartments in their homes that are not been permitted. There are a lot of people in town that have apartments in their homes that have not been permitted and.
They're not going to confess.
They're not going to say anything, but we don't have the staff to do that. The staff is really the assessors, assessing office. They've gone on, they looked at all the houses and so forth, they know what's going on. There's also the building inspector which issues permits for ADUs. This board can do it at a time of a subdivision if they so ask, but typically it's done through permitting process by the building inspector. So I'm going to say that there's two places they can get that. There's also a third one, which is when people register for their cars and they know basically who lives where and so forth. So I know when we did our master plan, we looked at all of the apartments we had and I think, Chris, you coordinated that, didn't you? With the, with the assessor and got that information. So I think there's a lot, are you a lot on our plate, but I don't think that's something, is something that we necessarily do.
I think, I think the cumbersome part of this study is going to be that the cumbersome and frankly, the dangerous thing is to ask someone, what are you getting for rent?
I don't think you can ask them.
I think you can ask them, I think, I think you can ask them either.
They're not going to tell you.
I think we're going to get.
And that's, and that's the problem, I think you have the jeopardy, you have the real jeopardy of getting a, a big black eye.
I think this board right now has a lot on its plate. And my personal response is, thank you very much, but this is.
I, I think the study can be done in ten minutes though.
It can be done by a lot of other groups.
No, I think, I mean, I think it can be done in ten minutes, they know what the ADUs are, they know the number. The problem is, what do they get, what do they get for rent, who their rent is to, which I don't think people are going to share.
Could you just do a square foot price based on, because the, the ADU would be on the assessment, correct?
A realtor's.
With the square footage of that ADU, just do a simple square foot.
Brendan wants to see, does someone else want to see, what do you want?
Brendan Blodigan, Hannah Lane. I just feel that this is trying to circumvent workforce housing and to say we already are compliant with workforce housing. And to ask somebody how much they're getting per month for rent, to me, I don't think we should as a town be doing that. Just my two cents.
It could change next week.
Daily.
Thank you, Chris.
This is not a role of the planning board.
It's not?
Okay. This is, this is a function of. Come on. The selectmen who operate the town. They have departments that we get the information as to what is a work, where are the workforce housing? That's all we ask for. We do not need the information what the rents are. And it would be obviously intrusive for us to collect them. And it would be very sensitive for the selectmen to collect them. It is highly controversial whether the IRS as the authority through the Census Bureau to collect that information with any degree of accuracy because it is voluntary compliance. So we're not going to rely on that. And it's not information that we collect and it's not of interest to us.
Well, I, but Chris, I think it should be of interest to you. I mean, when you, in the housing master plan chapter, it would be, it would be good, a good statistic to see how many ADUs there are. The rental is, is the sticky.
We asked the assessors and they provided a printout to us.
Yeah, that's helpful.
This is a single family, this is, this has a, this has a, is a duplex, this is a single family with an ADU.
And that's it.
They tabulated that.
We already have that.
That's all we need.
That's how we came up with the master plan.
Go look in the master plan.
But we didn't go around and knock on doors and say, do you have an ADU?
How much are you charging?
But if you're going, Brendan Blodigan again, if you're going to ask about the ADU rent, why aren't you asking every rental property in the town of Newington how much they're charging? Because wouldn't that also fit into?
It's not just ADUs, it would be any, any rental based on, any rental.
How much does the town rent a house at Fox Point for?
Fifteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Fifteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Is that, is that workforce housing price?
Just above, yeah.
Ken watches.
It doesn't matter, it's like, is that within the realm of workforce housing?
The best in the town. Okay, so I think what we need to do is answer the question is, John, I'm going to ask you to propagate later. That workforce, first of all, the selectmen have stated that in their previous statements and they have since changed. We understand that they've since changed their position, but they have stated early on that they were against the orders that is written. All right, and that, they have stated that very clearly and repeated.
It's on video.
It's on video. And I actually have that video, part of it right here. I listened to it, I, I just wanted to make sure that I heard it right and I did. The, the other part is, we're not going to go around and look at what people are renting. And we have the, the latest number that we have is what was done, that Chris did the homework when we did the housing section for the town, which was just this past year. Am I right, Chris? We wrote it on, you collected that data this past year?
It was a year ago.
A year ago. But since then, any new ADUs would have been permitted by the building inspector. So if anything's been added since then, you could just add it to the number that we have on the master plan. But I don't think we list it by ADUs, do we?
We have it by single, it's single occupancy or dual occupancy.
Right, and if you look at the.
Within the dual occupancy is duplexes and ADUs.
Oh, you did?
So. No, no, it is not broken out.
It's not broken out.
That number is compliant.
So if you also.
When I, when I spoke to the assessors, I said in the future, can you break that out? And they said, sure, okay. But that's not our data and.
So the next thing that they requested was that we contacted Rocky and Planning Commission to see what data they have. They have no data, they don't track it. They do have something from. They do have something, I forgot, is it New Hampshire Housing Authority or some authority that they have, I can list it out what it is. That I got from Teresa, Teresa can tell us again with that, I can send a forward, you forward email to you. But they only list the permits that were issued. They don't list whether or not it's a ADU, an apartment or whatever it might be, just a single family residence or a double family residence. Talking about like a duplex. And what they showed on there was what we just did with Lydia Lane. They showed those apartments or duplexes that were there. They said like four, six of them or something, I believe that's the ones they added. But I don't want to get into tracking and delving into doing an overreach, delving into people's personal stuff, especially if enforcement hasn't over the years been carried forward for people who built apartments and didn't get permitted. I don't want to get into that role and that's what it's going to look like. I think it'd be a big mistake. So that being said, I say thank you for asking, but go look at our master plan, that's the best information we have. And we're not going to do a study at this time. We've got too much to do, we've got CIP coming up, we've got the master plan we've got coming up and I think we've got a big year coming up with development of the town. We've got enough on our plate. So, and then finally answering the, the thing as far as the issue with workforce housing and them saying that they're not, that we're, that someone from the planning board or people from comments issued by the selectmen are in favor of workforce housing have been coming from this board. And the only thing I know that's come from this board is the board of selectmen representatives, the one who stated it. I don't know of anyone else who says, has said anything, has anyone else said anything different?
And the statement is exactly, just so I can be clear. Read the statement again that you're, in other words.
There have been comments issued by us, issued that the selectmen are not in favor of workforce housing.
Are not in favor of workforce housing, okay.
And my understanding is, the only thing that's come from here is from the board of selectmen's representative who has stated.
Who stated, yes.
That they're not in favor of the orders that we put out there. And he said he was representing the three board, the board of selectmen. Now, they have since changed their mind and we need to say that, we need to recognize that, that they did.
That's what this letter does.
And that's what, and that's what, they, they are stating it and I say, fine, we, great, but initially you were against it. And it was based, based on a statement that the selectmen rep made. I think that's what we're going to do, is, so we're now there, so I think we need to answer that in that particular way. If you could, I'll ask John to write something up to that effect.
I, I just, I gotta tell you, I mean, I heard what people said in this audience tonight and they said they're sick and tired of the bickering between the planning board and the board of selectmen. You need to let that go. Ken, Ken gave a long speech tonight and he said he supported this. I think going back to what Mike said is, I mean, either Mike, he shouldn't have said that or, I just think you're just great, you know, pouring salt into the wound.
Fine, I just trying to respond, I was trying to respond to this, that's all.
I think, the people spoke, they said enough of the, enough of the begging of the bickering, move on. I, I think, I think the letter has to be written to say that, you know, we cannot be collecting data on rents. It's not our, it's not our role, we're too busy. But I think to bring what, you know, I think maybe moving forward and working with the board of selectmen would probably be the best.
Fine, and they say we heard you at the meeting and then we understand that you're in favor of workforce housing.
Yes, that's great.
Glad to hear that at the meeting.
That's lovely, yes.
So say that in a positive light and we won't talk about what has been brought up on the past. Because it's a matter of record, how's that sound? And that's what I'm trying to do, I was trying to make it in a positive light, it wasn't coming out exactly right. So I think if we do that, we get it and I think we need to move forward with that.
That's great.
All right, so why don't we put something together to that effect?
Yeah.
Chris?
Just something to say that, that what they're asking for obviously is this.
Come on, I know you can say it.
I think this one you should give it to.
This town is not having a housing authority. It does not appear interested in establishing one, nor is any place in the state of New Hampshire that I'm aware of have rent control. And without those, you cannot enforce something. So our role is simply to make available the option for housing at the lowest price possible. What it is charged is, is up to the landowner. So from the standpoint to, this is not an area that the town is interested, the, the planning.
But why don't we, why don't we just say, we don't give the reason, why don't we just say, we're not going there?
Thank you.
And, and I think that's where it needs to go, okay? And that we have data, the best data we have from Rocky and Planning Commission and from what we have that we've done from this and that they should look at their own staff, the Kevin and the tax assessor, let them put that together. I'll make everything in the affirmative, the positive, trying to wrap that up, but we're not taking on that task.
And, and that's what we use, we use their data. Don't ask us to create something that you have the data for.
All right, so I just wanted to address it because the letter came out, I think sometimes we need to address these things and that's what we're going to do. How's that? Okay? If I was sounding negative and I, and I didn't need to, glad you kicked me.
I think we just need to let it go. I, I, you know, somehow we all ended in the same place today, which I don't really know how.
I don't know how.
It's sad that way, but, you know, I still don't understand why, they clearly have an agenda as to about the ADUs and instead of just coming to a planning board meeting and saying, we think X and Y, so.
So I know of a town that went out and looked for ADUs, asked their, they asked, you know, the number of apartments they had. They had better control and better permitting process for all apartments within their town. We haven't had a very good record of that. And what happens, there are apartments out there right now, they, they, people just don't want to tell the town that they are.
There's apartments in every town.
And sure, we just.
I don't want to tell people. I've lived in some of them.
But they, they don't have to tell the town. But the town will know based on who asked for dog licenses, who asked to register a car. All of those pertain, require the address. Who comes in to vote, what's your address, show your identification, show you utility bill. All that information is within the purview of the body operating the town and that is not the planning board.
Yeah. I think we can get something put together and probably out to everybody so it's in a positive light and do the best we can, how's that? All right, I need to move on. What else did we have?
That's it.
John, can you put something together for us?
Yep. Oh, no, that's not.
He asked us to come through with Gates instead of next Monday.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we had, we had, we did have a meeting scheduled for next Monday night, Dennis decided we were going to do, it was going to be a two-part meeting. One was going to be maybe perhaps a continuation of this work session or the public session tonight, we're not going to do that. The other half was going to be, or the, the primary reason was going to be to hear about the mixed use housing study at the mall. But that's not, it doesn't work for two of the three selectmen, so we, we tentatively selected April 6th. And through, all three selectmen can be there.
And the reason why April 6th, if you look at it, you try to look at dates before then. I'll look at the dates here.
On Monday.
I'm pulling up the calendar, yeah.
So six o'clock.
So if you look at the 9th, which is when we were going to do it, it's the night before elections. The town hall's been going crazy, they are just absolutely straight out. If you look at the 16th, that's the Monday following the actual town meeting, which is usually a tough weekend and going into Monday, we're all pretty tired. Looking at the 23rd, we have another planning board meeting, which is quite full. The 30th is a possibility, but there's a ZBA meeting, is a ZBA meeting in that night, I would highly recommend people attend that. It's going to be on the Cider Mill and so the 6th.
What date is that?
30th.
The 30th. So the 6th is the next possible date then to look at it, where I think it's, it's not a regular planning board meeting, but I think this should be, we should give this mixed use study attention. And all of you should read it, it's 222 pages, yeah.
What's the Cider Mill?
Meeting, if you actually want to.
I'm going to answer this question. The Cider Mill is on Fox Point Road at the intersection.
Oh, right there on the right?
I think it's falling.
I think it was falling.
It was, it's not anymore.
Yeah, the guy is re.
It's just perched.
Yeah.
The guy has refurbished it and he must have turned it into a home now. But he was supposed to be just refurbishing it to preserve it.
Where's the poop going to go?
He's now changing.
The second.
He's now asking it to be built up, so vote, vote there and that's not for discussion. That's not for discussion, Jim?
Why is it not for discussion?
Because I'm not going to have it in a public session on, on issues going before the ZBA. All right?
April 6th would not be a normal meeting, but you want to add a meeting?
I'm going to add the meeting on April 6th and we're still going to have one the following week, unless you don't want to do that because it's, I know we don't particularly want to.
Three out of four Mondays, we're going to have meetings?
Well, we can have three out of four Mondays in March. Do you want to do that? No, with the town meeting and all in, in.
It's something to consolidate stuff, this is.
So we're having two, we have this meeting and then we'll have another meeting on the.
16th?
No, no meeting, no.
23rd.
23rd.
23rd, we are having a meeting.
And what's on the agenda?
The hotel and.
For real?
Yeah, well, I, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I mean, these things have been on the agenda.
In the two lots subdivision, there should be a, very straightforward.
Careful, you say.
I know.
Yeah, this will be.
Don't jinx us.
All right, is the 6th the best date?
Did you confirm that with Clayton?
No, I have not, it's continued upon Clay Mitchell and Mark Gerson available. Let me see if they've responded.
Chairman, is this study available online to the town?
It's not, as far as the different boards right at this point.
Do you want to make available to the town?
Not at this point, I would like, it's a public meeting, but I'm, I'm trying to invite all of the boards. The selectmen seem to think, planners seem to think that this is probably something that the board should be looking at?
I, I just think it's, it's 200 pages long, it's, you know, it's, it's a pretty interesting topic. I have met with the consultants and it took, just going through and talking to them about it was an hour and 15 or 20 minutes. I think if we get the planning board, the board of selectmen, potential of the zoning board and the economic development committee in the same room together with them. It's going to take, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be a two and a half hour meeting. It's not the, that's not, I mean, the public can certainly sit and listen, but I don't think there's going to be time for public input. I think what we need, and then.
This is more like the work session with the board?
Just for them to release the document, you know, for them to release it, answer questions, sort of explain to them, explain to you their findings. You're going to find, you might love it, Chris, but it's pretty dry, pretty dry reading. Well, I, I know, I know you like your, I know you like reading flight manuals, but, but the, you know, the, the, the part that they wrote is, is pretty interesting. The studies are, you know, kind of dry, but I, I do think there's some very good information in there. And I think my sense, and I talked to Dennis about this, is if we could have that kickoff meeting, there'd be an opportunity beyond that to, to involve the public. But I, I think we all ought to have a handle on what this study is before, you know.
I guess my, my point is, is that this is going to be a fundamental opportunity, challenge, and you're going to be able to get it to the residents to decide if they want to change what has been unchanged zoning ordinance for over 35, 40 years. So between the different sectors. So at some point, there needs to be enough time for that to be distributed in town so they can read about it and talk about it for several months before it goes to a town meeting as the selectmen seem to be suggesting a diversification.
Well, just remember too, I know there's been talk about, you know, town meetings, the, the, the New Hampshire courts are very reluctant to, to grant special time meetings. I haven't seen one in years. So you generally have one chance at, at voting on a zoning amendments and it happens in March. You know, years ago, towns were petitioning the courts and they got it all the time for special time meetings, they're expensive. I don't, so I think this is, whatever happens, I think this is a year away from now.
John, before you go there, you said something, that was actually, thank you. You have to petition the court.
Yeah, for a special time.
Which is something I did not know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think that's where it's going to go, maybe it will, but I don't think it's where it's going to go.
Well, I was telling, one more, Chris said, but. Well, I was telling, I'm, I'm on what Chris said, but.
No, I appreciate, because the only time I'm worried it's been done is when we had a bond change.
Right, that's different, but zoning is not an emergency, you know?
So, I, I think we, I think we should just have with the, that's a good, that's a good cross-section of the town, when you have all those boards together.
Sure.
So, I think we should do that, and.
So, it's open to the public, but this is a work session where public comments are not gonna particularly take.
That's correct.
To avoid extending the meeting.
The other, the other thing is, if we just put it out there right now, right now, during the next 10 days, I think people could confuse what we're doing with workforce housing versus what we're doing with mixed use. And that is really gonna, yeah, ball everything, and I'm gonna say, what are you guys up to?
Can't offer mixed messages.
Yeah, so right now, it's not a good time to just release it to everybody, because it really will mess it up.
And then finally, it's a draft, and, you know, you all need to look at it, and there may be things you want added, or deleted, or revised, before it's released.
We gotta stay within the scope of course, and they had to give us examples, and they had to look at, you know, example of what it would be if it was stayed the way it is with mixed use, with no housing, versus mixed use with housing, and what the difference would be. They don't get into, they tell you how many students per unit, or how many kids per unit, but they don't get into whether it affects your school. That's for us to then take the raw data they have and decide, it affects the school, it affects services, police, fire, other uses that, you know, are something that we have to look at and decide as, as a board. You know, the one thing I wanna say, and I think someone said this earlier tonight, we have been, this board has been on top of land use for a long, long time, and we've had a good thing to follow, which is this, we haven't veered from that very far. We've also have our master plan, which we haven't veered very far, especially when it comes to zoning. And we've gotta remember that there could be pressures to be applied to different people, but we are the board that makes that decision. That's what we've been given, these, the state, the state laws backed this up, and told us that's what we do. Doesn't mean we don't take input from other people, but ultimately, we have to make that decision. We made a really tough decision recently about workforce housing. And we said, you know what? If we don't do it, this is what will happen, and we will be chastised and criticized if we don't do it, but if we do do it, again, it's the same sort of thing, I think it's, we had a responsibility to do it, so, I'm just trying to say, not going back to workforce housing, but I'm just trying to say is that we have the ultimate authority in doing that, but we need to listen to everybody, I think we are. It's really hard, especially when you don't get people to, to don't show up. So, just keep, just, just keep that in mind, and it's a hard decision to be making, it's sometimes a tough choice to do, do certain things. All right.
Oh, finally.
Is the 6th okay with everybody?
And we'll confirm that when we have a confirmation from the.
Mark Trujia, yeah.
The last thing that you should, some of it, some, before we leave, you need, someone needs to review it, or make a motion to review and approve the.
No, the minutes.
The sidewalk, they're very, very good.
My second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, minutes approved, can you please give that to?
Yes.
Say they're approved, no comments? And anything else from anybody? Thank you very much, we've been extreme.
Sorry.
All right, Emily?
Sorry, just one quick question to clarify, so, there's not gonna be a public comment at the April, necessarily at the April 6th meeting? But are, is that report gonna be available to the town?
Yes, if somebody even wanted it, they could have it.
Okay, all right.
But what I'm trying to say is, we really need to, this is.
Yeah, you need to focus on that meeting.
We really do, and we can't be focusing on, because we don't even know what the report says.
Right.
You know, we have to read it. Yeah, and you gotta remember something, this is the one thing about the, what we said this prior to the. Yeah, and I wish we, we said this prior to issuing the, the request of the, the study, by the, the selectmen asked us to do it. Even if it shows that it's economically viable, does the town wanna do it? That's the other part, there's two very distinct parts. You know, so, and we've always been, well, anyway, that's what we're gonna look at.
That's, that's just my question.
All right?
But absolutely, and then public comment, options available.
Yeah, it'll probably be going on for a long time if that were to change. All right, anyone else, because I'm ready to.